Good afternoon. Welcome to the September 14 meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live by some TV digital media. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is a consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner has requested withdrawal or continuance, or items for which his staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one's permitted to speak unless the planning board asks a question. For general use district zoning, the board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the district. Therefore, you may not refer to a specific use. For special use district zoning request, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the property and how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final approval by either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken by the board today are recommendations to go to those bodies for their consideration. If you are addressing the board today, before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item of business, approval of the minutes of the August 10 and 28 meetings, are there additions, corrections? Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Bryan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now I'll call on Aaron King for a consent agenda.
All right. First item is Item B1, zoning docket W-3335, and this is a request to rezone 1.1 acre from RS9 and highway business to highway business. And you can see the site there in yellow on the north side of Old Walkertown Road, east of Davis Road. The southern half of that site is currently zoned HB. The northern portion is zoned RS9. So the effect of this would be to consolidate that into one HB district. There's currently an existing restaurant on the southern portion of it. Highway business, special use zoning to the east and with a daycare and some storage buildings, and back to the west with HB zoning for a convenience store, and LIs zoning to the south for the rail yard. Staff has reviewed this. The area plan does recommend commercial for this property, and staff believes this request is consistent with the zoning pattern in the area and would recommend approval.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declare the public hearing closed. Move approval. Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Leake, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B2, zoning docket W-3341, and this is a request to rezone 2.1 acres from RS9 to general business, limited use. And you can see the property there on the west side of Commerce Court, south of Oak Summit Road, east of 52. The existing zoning pattern in that area, as you can see in that quadrant bound by those same roads, is highway business and then general business a little bit further to the south. This is a GBL request. The only restriction on this is the exclusion or prohibition of adult establishment. Given the zoning pattern in the area and the area plan recommendations which call for commercial for this entire block, staff feels like this is an appropriate request and would recommend approval.
Again, no one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declare the public hearing closed. Move approval. Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Groves, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B4, zoning docket W-3342. This is a request to rezone 1.7 acres from RS9 and institutional and public to institutional and public special use. You can see the subject property in yellow there. It's on the east side of Buchanan Street, south of IQ40, and it contains an existing daycare that was there legally non-conforming. It's lost its legally non-conforming status, hence the IPS rezoning request. This is the site plan that was submitted with that request. It really attempts to make use of the site as it currently sits, keeping the existing building. No additions are proposed, keeping the existing parking areas and existing access points out on Buchanan. It would add the fenced play area to the east or to the rear of the building, and type 2 buffer yards would be installed to the north and to the east. The area plan does recommend institutional zoning for this site, and staff would recommend approval of this IPS request.
Is there anyone here opposed to this recommendation? You're opposed? Don't need it unless you just insist. You won't say something. Come forward, Ms. Heisman.
Thank you, because normally I'm here in opposition. Anyway, good afternoon. I'm Carolyn Heisman, the limit 3335 Anderson Drive, 27127. I am here today on behalf of the Connaught Hills Community Association in support of the W-3342 zoning petition for changing the 2555 Buchanan Street zoning from RS9 and IP to institutional, public, special use or IPS as a technical change to bring this property into zoning compliance. This property is located at the northwest corner perimeter of the Connaught Hills community. The property at 2555 Buchanan Street has been used as a daycare center since the building was built in 1964, and its last occupant was Family Services. The Connaught Hills community would like to see this property continue to operate as a daycare center and supports the IPS zoning to facilitate this use. Connaught Hills also wants the IPS zoning uses designated in the staff report in case this property should ever cease to operate as a daycare center and to ensure as low an intensity of public and institutional uses as possible, given the surrounding residential neighborhood homes. The only other points Connaught Hills would like to emphasize are that the surrounding trees and tree canopy be protected and continue to be used for buffering. The 2555 Buchanan Street property adjacent to the church on the south side and the neighborhood housing on the northern east sides, and that no electronic message board signs be permitted on this property. In conclusion, Connaught Hills respectfully ask the planning board to approve W-3342 zoning petition request for IPS zoning for the 2555 Buchanan Street property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declare the public hearing closed. Move approval. Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Leake, yes, Mr. Bryan.
King, the uses that are in here are the ones that are approved, right?
They're the ones requested.
The ones requested.
Correct.
And that's all?
Correct.
So what is out there in terms of IP, like a transmission tower, is not being requested, is not being included in this?
Correct. It would just be limited to that list in your staff report.
Okay. And so that's conclusive in terms of that? Got a little confused when I saw the back and forth on it. The saving the trees is in...
So there's a tree save area. There's a tree save area, if you can follow the mouse. It's kind of hard to see on this blueprint, but you can see kind of starting here.
Yeah.
At the front facade, and then going back basically over to this area here and then back down to that property line. That's their tree save area. It's like 14,000 square feet.
And then I saw also in there that the message board had been agreed not to be included. So we're good with what we're talking about here. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, any discussion? Have a motion for approval? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B8. It's zoning docket F-1569, and this is a site plan amendment for GIS zone property over on Temple School Road. We're going to carry this forward or carry this to the end after we discuss 3345, the rezoning is kind of a companion case to this, so that will come up a little bit later in the agenda. Next item is UDO-281. This is a text amendment that was proposed by planning staff that deals with limited campus uses. In your agenda, you see that that is automatically continued to your October meeting. We need another month on that. We did also receive an email from Wake Forest requesting a one-month continuance as well. So that'll come back to you at your October meeting. The next item is UDO-282. This is a text amendment proposed by planning staff would provide alternative compliance to the Martin Luther King overlay district. So we briefed you at your work session on this, kind of answered some of the questions at that time, so I'll just provide a very high-level recap of this. The overlay district does have front build two lines of between five and 10 feet, so the buildings are intended to be pulled up close to the street. It requires a minimum of 50% ground floor transparency, and it also requires building entrances facing the street. Again, all those things, we look forward to try to have that urban form along the street. The way the ordinance currently is, there's no alternative compliance, so you have to meet it or you don't. There's no gray area in that. Staff believes it is a good idea to have alternative compliance in there, and so we've modeled the language that's in your report based off what we have in the Winston overlay district. So I'm not going to go through word by word the long paragraph that's in your ordinance, but in short, the alternative compliance an applicant would submit, and that will be reviewed by the planning board. It could allow for things like a drive-through lane, provided the site is designed to minimize inconsistency with overlay district and complement the urban form. So again, we're trying to meet folks halfway, so maybe you can't get to the five or 10-foot level, but if you have to have a drive-through lane or something of that nature, we can work with you on that, provided you're trying to help out, help the cause there. And then appeals of the planning board's decision would be heard by the city council. So with that, staff would recommend approval of UDO-282.
Okay. Thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declare the public hearing closed. Move approval. Let me get the motion. We have a motion from Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Groves, any questions? Mr. Bryan?
Mr. King, was there affirmation of this or agreement with this with the CDC that was involved in the original development of this and in that area?
We reached out to the CDC with the draft of this early on, and so there's been no objection to that and support for it, actually.
There has been support for it?
Not written, but yes, we've shared it with them. There's no issues with that.
Any discussion? We have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is C1. This is subdivision 2017-079, and this is a five-acre piece of property located west of Bartram Road and kind of along the Reynolda property there. It's zoned RS20, so you can see Bartram Road running right here, and then there's a small piece of public right-of-way that kind of comes in right here, if you follow the mouse, and it provides access to this property. So they are proposing a seven-lot subdivision under the existing RS20 zoning, and this is the site plan that's been submitted with this request. It's not a PRD, so we're not looking at things like buffers and open space. All of the lots are 20,000 square feet in size, and they do have the minimum lot width, so they do meet those ordinance requirements. The developer would be building a public road within the existing portion of that public right-of-way, and then they would be dedicating and extending public right-of-way to encompass the portion outside of that in the cul-de-sac. So this will be a public road that will serve these seven lots. We did have some conversation with the applicant about stormwater concerns. Our stormwater staff originally had concerns. There was an outlet shown going into the back of this property here. The developer has provided a dry detention pond here to try to alleviate those concerns, and we have a condition in your report to address some of these issues. I think stormwater staff is satisfied with what's been shown here, and staff would recommend approval of this subdivision request.
Move approval. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Groves, any discussion?
Yeah, question?
Sorry.
Explain to me where this is on Bartram Road. There's a spur that sort of turns towards someplace that says Bartram Park or Bartram Place once you get on Bartram Road. Is that where this cul-de-sac will go on down? Is that the development in there?
Yeah, so it might be easier. So when you come off Coliseum and you turn in Bartram Road, you pass those first two houses, and this is probably where there's some columns and some fencing kind of lead back.
Right. Okay, so it's going to continue on from there?
Correct.
And be in that. Okay. I was appreciative to see that there was some forethought on the runoff here, since I go back to the days when development along here affected what was then Lake Catherine, and I think we still need to keep that up, so I appreciate the city staff working on that.
Any other comments? Have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is D1, it's PBR 2002-040, and this is for Mount Tabor School. You can see it there on the south side of Petrie Road, and really the area in question is the western portion of this site where the football stadium is located. So again, this is the site plan that shows the western portion of that site. To kind of walk you through this, there's some additional viewing platforms that would be installed here beside the existing bleachers, some visitors concessions and restrooms, and then coming around to the home side, the bleachers would be demolished and replaced, restroom facilities on both sides, and then concessions on the east side. Other than that, the bulk of the campus is staying the same. There's no changes. So with that, staff would recommend approval of this request.
Move approval. Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Younger, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
The next case will be presented by Gary Roberts.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, next item on your agenda is zoning docket W-2744. The petitioner is Winston-Salem Business Incorporated, and the site is 12.76 acres located on the northwest side of Temple School Road, north of High Point Road. And the request is a final development plan for the use of warehousing in a LIS two-phase zoning district. So final development plans mean that you make the final decision. The zoning is already in place for this use. It has been for 14 years. It's just a matter of making sure the site plan meets ordinance requirements. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. It's located within the yellow suburban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area 3, and this is a zoning map showing the subject property there. This is about a 100-acre tract. It's within this parcel, but it's actually, again, about 13 acres located there in pink. Has a driveway entrance at the curve there on Temple School Road going back to the bulk of the property where the proposed structure would be built. To the north is all zone industrial. To the south is zone general industrial along Temple School Road, or to the southeast, excuse me, directly to the south. You have some RS20 zoning, I believe, and agricultural zoning, some single-family homes there abutting up to the southern and western portion of the site. This is an aerial photograph showing the subject property. It's been cleared in the past, was used as farmland in the distant past, and this is in the area plan, the southeast Forsyth County area plan that was adopted in 2013. It does recommend industrial zoning for this entire area. This, again, was part of the Dale site that was approved in 2003, about 190-acre development that goes all the way back to Union Cross Road. This is the entrance from Temple School Road. You have the Herbalife facility located to the right and the Ken Transport Site located to the left. This is across Temple School Road, and this image is taken from Cumbie Road, some of the residential area that I mentioned earlier that's a little bit further to the west. The site is in the background there. This is a proposed site plan showing the structure there in the center. It's 140,000-square-foot warehousing facility with parking and circulation located around it, a new entrance road there on the Temple School Road. They have agreed to provide street trees of the same species along both sides of that street. The green is a 50-foot type 4 buffer yard along the residential area there to the south and west, and that will be placed on top of a four-foot berm, and that's consistent with the original Business Park Design Guidelines recommendation or requirement. Also, they are going to have a requirement that there be no cinder block on the front of the facade there and visible from the main street. They've got a lighting condition, and also that no rooftop HVAC equipment be visible. The request would enable the development of a property that's been undeveloped and has been industrially rezoned since 2003. The request is consistent with the recommendations of the area plan, as I mentioned earlier, and it complies with the first phase conditions, again, including lighting, berming, adjacent to residential zoning, and a condition pertaining to building materials. And staff's recommendation is for approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I just had a question based on we went out to look at it, the sign check. I do remember seeing a berm. I guess it might have been for the adjoining industrial where the...
Yes.
It was not in good condition.
Right. That's a separate case that we will get to shortly or later in this meeting, and on that case, they have agreed to some additional plantings, but that's not this.
Okay.
Is any of the buffer up now?
I don't think so. The site has not been graded.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Not in... Simon, his proponent, Mr. Leake?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Bob Leake, 1080 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem. I'm president of Winston-Salem Business, Inc. We are the owners of the property. Just to reiterate what staff just reported, this property was assembled as about a 200-acre tract back in the early 2000s. It became home to Dell Computer for close to five years, and then Herbalife has come in and purchased the facility and been operating that facility now for, I guess, five or six years. They split off 100 acres. We purchased that to protect industrial land in this county because we have a severe shortage of both industrial land and specifically industrial buildings. We have partnered with a regional developer to construct a speculative industrial building on this site. That's what you saw the site planned for today. We believe this is really important for Forsyth County and for the economic development efforts of this area, and I would encourage you to support this request, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, Mr. Leake? Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Turn to the opposition. First person to sign up is Myrna Gaetrose. Am I close? Okay. Okay. You know who you are.
Yes, my name is Myrna Gaetrose. I reside at 4161 Gray Tuck Drive, which is 27107, which is the one road that directly goes straight up Gray Tuck with five homes that will be visual to this huge building. I've been told at the meeting I went to in August that it's approximately three stories tall, approximately 140,000 square feet, and will be a visual monster, in my view. I've been on Gray Tuck since 2000. I've been through countless meetings with first Dell, then Caterpillar, then Keen Trucking, and now this. Enough is enough. We are only five houses. We moved there to be in the country. We're not in the country anymore. We've been annexed into the city, and that's enough. I am opposed to this building at the end of Gray Tuck and Temple School Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Cynthia Woods?
Hi, I am Cindy Cynthia Woods. I reside at 4147 Gray Tuck Drive, Winston-Salem, 27107. We are the very last house on Gray Tuck Drive, so we therefore are 330 feet of direct abutment to this proposed building site. Right now, my garage faces that building site. We have a one-story home, and they're proposing a 32-foot-high building at its side with a 50-foot buffer. My driveway is 325 feet, so 50 feet to me is simply really not enough buffer between that high of a building at its peak. It's supposed to be 44 feet, 140,000-square-foot building, and it goes from edge to edge. It goes from the edge of our property all the way to the edge of the adjoining rear properties of the houses on Cumbie. We're concerned about quite a few things with this construction. First of all, it's a spec warehouse, so they intend on building a warehouse that may accommodate up to two companies with up to four bays that will accommodate tractor trailers. The tractor trailer is facing our neighbors to Cumbie. The tractor trailer bay will be approximately 160 feet from my and my husband's property. That's pretty darn close for a tractor trailer. We are all on well. That's a huge concern, so we've taken all of the area that now is natural area, and we're going to put impervious material there. We are concerned about the integrity of our well water. We've been told that it will be sent to a basin and filtered, but we've not seen those plans yet. I don't know if anyone has seen those plans, but it's a concern. It's also a concern because there's impervious material being added that the runoff from any potential diesel, fuel, tires, et cetera. There's 50-some parking spaces slated to be adjacent to our property, so that's a big concern. The property value in general is a big concern because of such a big building that has no proposed tenants right now being added at the end of our property, and all of my neighbors down the street will be able to see the property because of the height of the building. No matter if you build a berm and you have a green space, simply the pure height of the building alone, you'll be able to see it from the end of the road. We're concerned about noise from whatever company may come in because there is such a short buffer zone, and we're not sure if this is going to be in a higher plane than the adjoining properties. In other words, our land, Gray Tuck Drive, we're the highest at the end, and it slowly slopes downward. So is this building going to be built higher in a higher elevation or an even elevation to our property and the adjoining properties on Cumbie? And what will that mean for runoff? General ambience of our neighborhood, obviously, is a big concern. Part of the reason that we moved there also, just like Myrna, is for the quiet and the ambiance. We have deer and all kinds of animals. I know that's not a concern to you guys, but it's a concern to me that we disrupt all of that, put up a large building that has no definite laces, so it's going to be just an empty building to begin with, when we've got a big tract of land where we already have industrial commerce on the other portion of that 100-acre property. So does it make better sense or does it make sense before we make a permanent decision? And once it's built, it's permanent, it's forever, rather than disrupting all of this, is maybe taking a look at a different place on this 100 acres that doesn't so closely abut to residential areas? And that's why I'm saying...
Thank you, ma'am.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
I'm generally impressed that there's a berm here and then a buffer on top of that, but you still don't think that that will block?
I don't, and part of the reason is unfortunately, it's on my cellphone. I have a picture when they originally went in, and they graded part of that property. They removed all of the volunteer trees. There's a small section now of scrub brush, natural grass, and volunteer trees, and they're nice trees. They're Bradford pears and oaks and maples that are left, but even then, I could still see the trucks and the Caterpillar equipment up a grade higher from my driveway, from my garage, actually.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Bryce Porter?
Six and a half minutes left. My name is Bryce Porter. I live at 3069 Cumbie Road with my wife Pam and our five small children, 27107. At the risk of being repetitive, I have several of the same concerns that my neighbors have expressed already. Our property is directly adjacent. If I refer back to the picture you saw earlier with the playground in the foreground, that is my property, and you'll have to imagine what I thought was a 45-foot-tall building proposed directly behind that and how that's going to affect the life of my family. Based on what I can see from the plan, the industrial building is of a nature that will greatly impact the surrounding environment, including groundwater, air quality, water quality, amount of groundwater, noise pollution, light pollution, privacy issues, and generally affect my family's ability to enjoy our lives in the house we've lived in for over 10 years. What was once a neighboring field full of wildlife becomes a huge building with security cameras on the corners and lights and trucks pulling in, according to the recommendation that was filed 400... 10 years. What was once a neighboring field full of wildlife becomes a huge building with security cameras on the corners and lights and trucks pulling in, according to the recommendation that was filed 498 times per day. The sound of trucks backing up, industrial workers working in close proximity to my family. The backside of my house is a wide-open entertaining space with a pool, 90-foot patio. It is generally where my family spends its entire day, and it will be facing a series of truck bays with trucks backing up and all kinds of safety issues, especially runaway trucks that are not managed correctly, potentially causing severe impact to my home and/or my family. Work done already to the property, and I'd like to point out that a previous statement about the property not being graded is incorrect. It has been graded. That grading caused significant impact on my property already vis-à-vis the catch pond directing, channeling water directly through my property that turns my land into a swamp. That playset that you saw is no longer used because of that swamp that my property becomes for three days every time it rains. This, I fear, is the first of many severe negative impacts to my property as a result of this building. I don't believe sufficient research has been done to determine the extent of the impact or potential impact that this development could cause. As a significantly impacted neighbor, I do have several concerns, but I'll try and detail quickly. First and foremost, environmental impact. I don't believe an environmental impact survey has been done. I would request that one is done as it pertains to the impervious surfaces aforementioned, as well as the potential for fuel spills, other indeterminate industrial waste spills, air quality with trucks idling. So I would respectfully request that an environmental impact survey be done to determine the potential extent of contamination to water, reduction of volume of water, impact to air quality, and an impact to other environmental concerns. Noise pollution and nuisance, as aforementioned, there are tractor-trailer trucks pulling in up to almost 500 times a day. Loss of control from a truck could, you know, curate into my house. It could cause physical injury to my house, to my children, to my family. I don't believe that sufficient protection is in place. Other industrial properties nearby, vis-à-vis the Keen Trucking location, have fencing put up. I believe at least fencing should be put up to preserve the privacy of our house. I think that a buffer is great and everything, but it doesn't stop someone from wandering through. Fence has a more deleterious effect to people's ability to wander into my property. So I think I would request that we consider controls that can control the behavior of both vehicles and people on that property, which I believe is 190 employees were proposed. Safety issues for my children, as I mentioned, I have five small children ages eight and under, and a building of this sort will be an attractive nuisance without fencing to prevent my children from playing. I think that'll be a concern. My property is nearly four acres. You can imagine the cost of me installing a fence just so that I can account for your building. Don't want that. So I would request the site plan include a safety fence, protect the safety of families, children, residential neighbors and properties. Privacy concerns with any industrial building usually comes security cameras. The security cameras that mounted at the height suggested would look over the berm into my property. As I said, that is the side of the house my entire, my family spends our entire lives. So I'm worried about the privacy of my family as regards to this building. Light pollution from street lamps, also a concern, and I want to ensure that the deed and covenants are met. I also have a significant concern around the characteristic of the occupant as UCIC 140K, which a Google search does not turn up any information about. There does not seem to be any public information about this entity, whether it's a company, a person, or there's some kind of consortium. I believe the public has a right to know what UCIC 140K is. There was no search on the Winston-Salem Business Incorporated website reveals no information whatsoever, zero hits for either UCIC or UCIC 140K. And I believe it is suspicious enough to reveal that there is potential that something is trying to be masked here or hidden from public view, and I don't think that that's appropriate. I think the public has a right to know who is behind this, and so I don't, I don't think that this could be approved without knowing who is requesting these things, who is, you know, the entities that are being masked by this UCIC 140K. I think that summarizes my concerns fairly quickly and hopefully not too repetitiously. I would respectfully request that this not be approved and that further study, further planning, and further effort be done to create a cushion for the neighbors. You know, this, one of my primary concerns, of course, is that I'll never be able to sell my house after this building is built. No one will ever buy my house. The significant property value decrease most likely will occur. I'm not sure I have legal reparation for that or not, but it's a great concern. If you could imagine 140,000-square-foot building being built 100 feet from your bedroom and what that would do to your life, I would ask that you keep that in mind as you make this decision. Thank you.
I was taking notes when I missed part of what you said about UCIC or the proposed tenant.
Correct. If you'll refer to the agenda, UCIC 140K, and then in parentheses again, UCIC 140K, which does nothing to clarify what UCIC 140K for property owned by Winston-Salem Business Incorporated. That is the petitioner-owner listed. Again, a Google search turned up nothing, other than the planning board's agendas. A search of Winston-Salem Business Incorporated's website turned up nothing. A search of Carolina Investment Properties turned up nothing. This is, as far as I can tell, an unknown entity, and the public has a right to know.
The name is, it's UCIC 140K. It's Union Cross Industrial Center, 140,000-square-foot building. I think it's the nomenclature that, perhaps Mr. Leek can clarify that.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Forty-five seconds.
Anyone else like to speak? Saying none, I declare the public hearing closed. It's the wishes of the board.
I had a couple of questions for Mr. Leek.
Okay.
Could you explain why you wanted, as this is a large site, why you wanted to put this warehouse in this lower portion of the site so close to the residential properties?
Well, the idea is to develop the whole parcel, the whole 100 acres. This piece is...
Maximizing the space.
Exactly. This piece is separate from the balance of the park, going to be used for something, so that made sense to start there. And it is, again, speculative in nature. So that's why we don't know, you know, what the final use will be at this time.
And I read in the material we had that there was a meeting that you had with the neighbors?
I believe the, like, yes, the development partners did.
And I was just wondering if there was any attempt to satisfy any of their concerns that they raised with respect to the berm, the plantings, what kind of a buffer yard there would be?
I would have to defer to them.
I'm Robin Team, 206 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I am part of the development company that is doing a joint venture with Winston-Salem Business, Inc. to develop this 100-acre parcel. It has been zoned like this for 14 years. There have been a lot of concerns raised. I understand those concerns. I'm sympathetic with a lot of those concerns. One of the biggest things that everybody is so worried about is stormwater runoff. Right now, you've got a large 13-acre parcel that was graded and seeded based on code, and it just sheets off, and it may cause some runoff issues to the back or to the left of that property. Once this property is developed, every square foot of that runoff is going to be channeled into a proper stormwater basin. So stormwater runoff is going to be much more effectively managed post-development than it has been pre-development. And all of that water is going to be channeled to the south, which is the upper side, correct? South?
North.
North. North, and so will be completely directed away from the adjacent residences.
But to the question about, did you negotiate any things with the neighbors in terms of the plantings and those kinds of issues that they raised?
We did not. We complied with the zoning that was in place.
Okay. And you're not showing a stormwater pond on your site plan. Is it, so where would that be? Is it somewhere off the site?
The stormwater pond, looking at the site plan that's being projected right now, will be almost due north of the subject property. It will be underneath a power plant.
If you look in your, if you look in your packet on your site plan, there's an inset map. Oh, right. Actually, if you have the site plan in front of you, there's a inset map that shows the end of that hammerhead, and then it drains to the northwest, and there's a rectangular proposed BMP area. It's going to be towards the creek, towards Glen High Road.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's been concern about the trucks in the turnaround, the loading docks, the docks being closer to the residence area. How was the orientation of the facility designed so that that wasn't on the away from?
That's a great question, and one that we considered upfront. You have to take the natural contours of the land into consideration. A truck dock's going to be four feet lower than the pad level, the interior of the building, and it has to be put on that side of the building for that reason.
You also brought up the issue of security. Have you thought to that point?
We have not thought about security fencing, nor have we thought about cameras, because, as has been pointed out, it's a speculative building to recruit new industry, hopefully to employ lots of our unemployed workers in the city limits. And we really don't know who's going to go in there yet.
So what was the tone of the neighborhood meeting? I hear you say you're...
We really did not have a neighborhood meeting. Once this was publicized, I think my coworker, Mr. Team here, had a, had a few telephone conversations with neighbors.
Neighborhood meetings are actually not a requirement with final development plans. They're certainly encouraged. They're required for site plan amendments, but not final development plans.
Can you explain what we're looking at? It's not a reason...
Yeah, this, this is a final development plan, which basically, going back to what several people have said, the actual rezoning, setting the allowed uses for this property and the constraints under which they could be developed with those special design conditions, that was all decided with the rezoning that happened in 2003. So this was an LIS two-phase zoning, which required then that when the property is ultimately developed, this or any other part of the, what you see in yellow there, you would have to, you would have to bring in what's called a final development plan, which in essence is a site plan approval for that, because the original rezoning did not show any buildings there. Two-phase allows you to have a basic site plan with your buffer shown and your conditions for developing. It does not require putting in footprints of proposed buildings, because back at that time in 2003, it was not known whether this was going to be a business park that had lots of little parcels and smaller buildings, or whether it was going to be large buildings, or whether there was going to be some combination of each. So it was impossible at that point to speculate on a site plan, which is why they chose LIS two-phase with the idea that the final development plan would have to fall under the conditions that were set in the first phase, which Aaron made reference to in the staff presentation. They had to follow those design conditions that were in the original rezoning.
Let me ask one more question. Mr. Leek, for, to help the public understand this a little bit more, in 2003, this was already, I mean, this was zoned, and that was when that decision was made by the city and I guess the county a little bit in here?
Yes.
Because this is split.
This all was in the county in 2003.
It was all in the county then.
2005, it went into the city.
So that is when it was decided that this was going to be industrial. There probably will be future plans that will fill up even more of this spot, right? I mean, that would be the ideal development. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So I guess the public needs to understand that the zoning occurred in 2003. The full thought was to fill this up with as much industrial as you could put on there to...
Up to 70%.
Yeah, to, in order to employ people and get industry going and things like that. Okay, I just, I just wanted to be clear because hopefully they will be back in here with other site plan adjustments in the future.
Certainly. Well, and to speak further to, Mr. Leek mentioned the shortage of industrial land. You know, we did an inventory of our industrial land a few years ago, did a study on it, and saw that compared to other cities of our side, of our size, we are short several thousand acres of industrially zoned land for our future needs, our future economy, future population growth. So making use of the, what's already zoned is certainly paramount, but also we made some recommendations about other areas that made sense in the city and the county to designate industrial land.
Anyone care to make any kind of motion on this, or you got a second? Motion for approval, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I mean, I, you know, I think Mr. Leek and the developer and everyone like that should, should try to accommodate some of these. I mean, you know, increasing the berm by another two feet or whatever you need to do in there to try to make, be good neighbors in the midst of this, even though the neighbors have to realize that this is, for all intents and purposes, industrial. And I would certainly hope there would be some fencing in the future, just simply because you want to protect your property along the way. So I think that's probably something the neighbors will see in the future as it goes along.
Depending on who the tenant is, we're probably, you're probably right.
Right.
We don't know that. Any other comments?
I have a question in general for this property. There's no limit, height limit or any building. Is there something?
It's 70 foot by, 70 feet by right, and then if you step the building back a certain distance for each foot you go up, you can actually go above that height. But they've indicated on their plan a maximum height of 45 feet. And Chris, compared to a single-family zoning district, maximum height in a single-family district is 45?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Bryan said. I think it's important, you know, in these cases to work with the neighbors just for, you know, public relations purposes, and anything that can be done to help out, especially with the berm and the plantings on the berm, and maintaining those plantings also is really important.
Any other comments? We have a motion for approval, those in favor. And the opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, the next on the morning agenda is zoning docket W. 3343. Tissue is Jim Site Development, LLC. And the site is 0.87 acre located on the west side of Salus Creek Parkway north of Fairlawn Drive. And the request is a site plan amendment for the use of a banking and financial services establishment in a GBS zoning district. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan located in the yellow suburban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area Three. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there highlighted in yellow. It's currently undeveloped. It is zone GBS. This was a part of a 27-acre rezoning that took place about two years ago on former Sunny Knoll property. They're at the intersection of Fairlawn and Salus Creek Parkway. This is in the north, northern corner of that property. Directly to the north, you have the Crown Park Apartments, zoned RM12S, and multifamily zoning across Salus Creek Parkway and then general business directly to the south. This aerial photograph was taken several years ago. If you've been out there recently, you've noticed a lot of construction activity there. They're constructing a new grocery store there that, just directly to the south of the subject property. The area plan, North Suburban Area Plan, recommends office for this property. And these images are taken on site. This is looking north on Salus Creek Parkway. The site is just to the left. You can see some of the apartments, Crown Park Apartments in the background there within the trees. And this is the subject property here, a little bit to the right. To the left is the new grocery store under construction, and that's the grocery store there. I'm standing at the entrance there into the development, and this is looking south on Salus Creek Parkway. The approved plan is very similar to what you're looking at now. The red space, that is the proposed bank, and the approved plan from two years ago showed a stormwater management facility located in that area. During interdepartmental review, it's been determined that the stormwater facility that was constructed several years ago in this area here for the Crown Park Apartments is actually adequately sized to handle the stormwater from this site. Therefore, they are coming in for the site plan amendment to construct a bank on this property. The use of bank and financial services is already an approved use. The same buffer yards that were approved on the same original site plan are shown along the north and the northwest there adjacent to the residential. The access points will not change. Have a right-in, right-out there on Salus Creek Parkway and full access down onto, actually, a... and, uh, full access down onto, um, actually a right in, right out onto Fairlawn Drive. So really it's, um, an approved shopping center. Uh, this would add some additional development within that. And it's, um, the stormwater would be channeled into this existing facility located here. Uh, this is an image of the proposed structure. And, uh, approved access points again on the Salus Creek Parkway and Fairlawn Drive will not change. And the previously approved conditions, including the perimeter buffer yards, will remain in place. Uh, they have also agreed to a double, uh, double row of shrubs along Salus Creek Parkway along their street yard. And staff recommends approval. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. We, we have received some correspondence from some concerned neighbors about stormwater. Uh, and we do have Keith Huff, the Stormwater Director here, present if you have any specific questions about that.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, sir.
Any questions of staff at this time? Um, Gary, um, have any other things changed on this site? I mean, I, I was caught a little unawares that the stormwater pond that we had approved is no longer there. Are there any other things that have changed, for instance, lighting or anything else on this, this site that we're talking about?
No, the lighting condition is still in place. Access points, buffer yards, signage, landscaping along the two major thoroughfares.
We, we carried forward all of the applicable first-phase conditions to this site plan amendment to keep it as consistent as possible.
So it, now, it's a type three in the back that, that is between this development and, um, Crown Park?
It is. Fifteen-foot type three.
Now, you, you've got a new device is, I think, the way you refer to it here? Stormwater device back in, behind the shopping center now?
A previously approved device that has been there for probably decades.
No, no, no. A, a brand-new one. I mean, you've got the stormwater pond, but you've got a pipe, which is part of the device, I'm assuming, and rock, which is part of the device.
To channel the stormwater to the existing pond.
And do you consider that a type three? Barrier going through there?
Can you help us out with that? I mean, we got buffers and we got stormwater.
Well, okay, you buffer. I mean, is it a, you, you've got rocks in a wall there now. You don't have a fifty-foot buffer like was approved?
Stormwater pipes can encroach within the buffer yard to some degree. I can't say specifically how much. And if you can have rip rafting on that, I've.
Is there a way you can get clarification about what the rules are on that?
Yeah, the petitioner can probably come back, kind of explain what's going on with that.
Okay, I, okay, along the way with that. So nothing else has changed? Because let me tell you, that was a big surprise when I finally figured out that that pond wasn't there. And how did, how did that occur?
Well, the petitioners requested, uh, the ability to do this. So that's why, that's why it's before you today. And it will go to city council for final.
But isn't it already in place?
We.
No, there may be some, some erosion control measures along the perimeter of it right now, but that's not long-term stormwater.
The, the petitioner or the director of stormwater needs to probably answer those questions. That's, that's not.
Okay, rather than staff here. Okay.
Let's do a public hearing where we might get these questions answered.
I'm just trying to get clarification, what has changed between the last time we saw it and, and that. And I'm still not sure I'm all with.
And the change is rather than a stormwater pond in the place where the ba- where the bank is, it's the bank.
But the pond's not there now.
And the, and the, and using the pond that is adjacent to the site for the, for the stormwater.
Okay. All right, let's have the public hearing. First person, Jeff Flattery, are you going to speak? Mr. Dickey? Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Luke Dickey with Stimel Associates, six oh one North Trade Street, Suite two hundred, Winston Salem, two seven one zero one. So what we have before you today is just, uh, a lot of the members of the boards weren't here for the original, uh, Sunny Knoll rezoning, which took place actually back in nineteen eighty-eight. So just kind of want to give a brief overview of that before we get into, uh, what took place then in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, so what you have roughly in front of you right now is a, uh, the overall Sunny Knoll development was about a hundred and forty-four acres. And once again, this was rezoned back in, uh, nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, Crown Park, uh, Oak Apartments was, uh, built up along Bathabra Road there. Behind the site that you're looking at today is the Crown Park Apartments. Further down, down to the south, uh, we have the, another Crown Polo Apartments project, the Salem Funeral Home, uh, located here, uh, which actually is now owned by Wake Forest University, uh, Sunny Knoll Office, uh, Brighton Gardens, and then Wells Fargo, uh, data center. And so what took place then in two thousand and fifteen is, uh, we, uh, took those, oh, excuse me, I forgot. But Liberty Healthcare has already been approved for this location, uh, right here. What took place in two thousand and fifteen, we brought these, uh, basically four tracks in, uh, repositioned the, uh, retail and office, uh, to be utilized, um, over onto, it's called Track One. And what we're going to focus then is on this Track One here, uh, for where we've got the, uh, site plan amendment that's being requested. The site plan that was, uh, brought before you in two thousand and fifteen, uh, this is the southern track. Uh, Sheets is going located on the south side here of Fairlawn and Salus Creek Parkway. Uh, had a restaurant, a drive-through, some retail shops, a possible restaurant in line, and then another retail shop located here. This is the track that we're reviewing, uh, today. So this is the Lidl Grocery Store that's, uh, currently under construction. And then we also had some more retail restaurant in-line shops there. What had taken place is when this plan was put together was, uh, we had come in and shown a stormwater pond, actually both on, both tracks were known as Track One. Because at that time, we had a condition that was placed on the site plan, uh, for stormwater study to be done. Uh, not enough, all the due diligence was not done at that time for the rezoning. So we went ahead and planned that if stormwater management was going to be required, these would be the locations that we would provide stormwater management. During the engineering phase then of the overall, uh, for the development for that stormwater study, it was determined then at that time that there were two ponds that were constructed basically on the Crown Park Apartments site. Uh, one pond is located in this vicinity right here, and another pond is right here. So this was constructed back in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, it was determined through working with Joe Fogarty and Keith Huff, through Stormwater Division, that the pond that was for this site for Track Eight, constructed right here is what we're draining to, was sized, uh, for this site, and therefore we were kind of grandfathered in for stormwater and stormwater requirements at that time. So therefore, we are before you then today saying that a pond that was shown on the site plan, which was never constructed, uh, opened up for an opportunity of another point eight-seven acres for development. And then for that site plan then, is what we have presented then today, is in place of that pond is this, uh, three thousand one, uh, two hundred and twenty-one square foot, uh, bank to go on to the site. Uh, the buffer is going to remain. Uh, the, the pipe that is coming, uh, basically back to this side is actually in place now because it was built for Lidl and sized for that. As that pipe goes through the buffer, you don't want to plant trees right on top of it. You can plant the trees off to the side of that, and then your shrubs will go on top of where it is. So you just make sure you space your plantings then so that you don't have the big root system of the trees growing on top of the pipe. But we still meet the minimum requirements that we'd have for a type three from the planting ratios, uh, back in that location. Uh, like Gary had mentioned in the presentation, uh, overall, we're not requesting any other changes to any of the conditions that have already been approved for the site. Uh, we will still have the, um, street yard requirements that are going to be, um, on the front, which is, uh, another double row of evergreens for additional screening along Salus Creek Parkway. Uh, no access changes are going to take place. We do have one entrance, of course, coming in alongside of the service area, uh, for the, uh, Lidl. Uh, to access the site with the drive-through coming around this side. Uh, this site needs to be built up just a little bit, so there will be about a five-foot retaining wall that faces out onto Salus Creek Parkway, but the street yard plantings would be located in front of that wall. So that is the overall general, uh, review of this. Uh, so once again, it is only a point eight-seven acres. Uh, this is a three thousand three hundred and twenty-one square foot bank with drive-through. One other exhibit, uh, kind of show back to you real quick, uh, just kind of clarify, uh, the stormwater. This area is, of course, going back behind, there's a creek behind Old Town Drive, which is right here. This section of Sunny Knoll over here on the east side of Salus Creek Parkway basically drains through this part and goes to the middle of the Edgebrook Drive neighborhood. This is Flood Plain down here. This track then is draining through this way and then coming back up through this section. So this overall drainage area that this is coming through is about a hundred and forty acres of an urbanized, uh, basically a watershed that's coming through here. So most of this solid development takes place along Renolda Road, uh, has not been managed for stormwater. Uh, Sunny Knoll development portions here have, uh, stormwater management ponds in place. Um, and, uh, overall, this drainage area was four hundred and fifty-two acres. And we're bringing in right now for a roughly half an acre of new impervious area that has already been sized and managed, uh, for this, uh, in the Crown Park Apartments, uh, pond. We did have some current concerns, of course, when we sent out our, our invitations, uh, for just a, excuse me, not invitations, but a letter to the neighbors. Uh, we sent it out to everybody that we had sent to in the original two thousand and fifteen. Uh, it was ninety-six property owners. Uh, we received, uh, about three emails back from, uh, citizens concerned about stormwater runoff, rightly so in this area because there is an existing problem that's been going on, uh, for quite a while. And then, uh, so we set up a meeting then with Keith Huff and the residents to kind of go over what the stormwater requirements were. And I believe they also had a site visit today with some of the neighbors, uh, to kind of walk and show the concerns of, of the erosion. If you have any questions really in regards of what the requirements are from, from stormwater, I'll let Keith Huff with the city answer those because he's going to have much more knowledge base about what the rules and procedures are, uh, for that approval of the stormwater. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time, or we can save it for, uh, later on discussion.
Any questions?
I do have a question, Mr. Dickey, um, about the pipe that is bringing water from your site to the Crown Park pond. Do you happen to know the diameter of that pipe?
No, I don't know that, that off the top of my head of what that was.
Do you know how, what length of pipe that is? It looks like it's considerably.
Yeah, it, it is a sort of long pipe. Uh, when that pond was, uh, constructed, I believe it was, uh, the drainage wave was coming through that. And so we're heading in the same direction of the drainage, uh, to go into that pond. Um, it was sized for a certain impervious area and that, so the sizing of that pipe was sized to say this overall development, it's going to be seventy percent impervious. So it was upsized to make sure that it meets that requirement. Um, whether or not our site doesn't, that we're adding right now is not, uh, seventy percent impervious. It's only like sixty-four percent impervious. So when you size the pipes, you size them larger, knowing that you're going to build to a certain impervious ratio, and that's what is taking place on this site.
Okay. And then my other question has to do with the responsibility for maintenance of the pond. Are you, did you enter into some kind of agreement? Is there a bond related to that? What happens if, as far as maintenance?
As far as I know, there is not a maintenance and operation agreement for the pond that was constructed as part of this Sunny Knoll, uh, development. Keith can a- answer that probably better and what's on the book.
So you're just passively taking, making use of a pond that's there?
It was a pond, a pond that was sized for this track to go to.
I see. Okay. So you, there's no formal agreement with the apartment pond?
That's correct, yes.
Thanks.
Who owns the storm drain pond?
The, the pond is on the Crown Park Apartments property.
Okay. So, and, and there's no agreement?
Correct.
Um, all of this feeds, now, let me, let me first find, um, you're, you're speaking on behalf of the developer right now?
Yes, correct, sir.
And, and is the developer here as well?
Yes, he is. Jeff Flattery is here.
So we, we could get to the developer. And so I want to be sure what you say is what the developers also agree to. You also showed in your discussion the pond on the other side, which feeds into the same creek that we're talking about with this property.
Correct. That was the pond that was, uh, developed to handle the apartment project.
Yeah, can you, can you show that, uh, picture again, uh, of the other sides over with Sheets that runs into that same creek?
Well, Sheets is located.
One that showed the attention pond, I believe, or was it?
Yeah, just, just for the kind of the consideration, since it shows the drainage area. Sheets is located on this corner right here.
Yeah.
There was a facility that was built right here that handled the Wells Fargo on this property. So the Sheets and everything on this track four drains into that approved stormwater device, which then goes into this section here and then on down. This track was sized for go to this pond right here, and the apartment project right here is to go to this structure right there.
So now you're with Stimel and Associates?
Yes, sir.
Did you all do a study on this stormwater?
Yes, the study was done, uh, that showed that this meet the requirements for the pond that was constructed, uh, at the time. So then we've got the letter from, or the note from, uh, City Stormwater that it meets the requirements. And Keith can answer that.
So there is a, there is a study out here, Paul, that we can have access to that, that, um, has been written and submitted to Stormwater?
Uh, Keith is nodding his head, and when he gets up, he can also confirm that that is the case, yes.
Okay. And when you changed over to this other pond and put in that device, what, what date did that occur?
That was approved in nineteen ninety-eight.
No, no, no. The, uh, when you decided to, uh, put water instead of going to the pond that we approved on, on the plat, you went behind Lidl to connect in with the drainage, uh, into the storm pond on Crown Park?
Yes, that was, that, that took place after the zoning was approved and when we did the stormwater.
Do you know what date that was that you got an approval for that?
Uh, I don't have that specific date in front of me. It would have been, take place when we did the construction documents to be submitted, uh, and through the permitting process after that, July two thousand and fifteen date.
Theoretically before grading, right?
Oh, yes. The stormwater approval has to take place before you grade.
Do you know when you started grading?
Jeff probably answered when they went out to, to start that grading.
Just to Mr. Duggan's question about a stormwater agreement, is the reason you don't have one because you're taking the position that when the subdivision was put in place, the ability to use that particular pond stems from the development of that original subdivision? In other words, when it was subdivided, platted, there wasn't a requirement that particular tracks used particular ponds? Is that accurate?
Basically from our understanding of the, at the time of nineteen ninety-eight, unlike the ordinance of today, there was no operation and maintenance main, uh, requirement for the construction of those ponds. But, so they did construct the ponds time for the management of that site. There just wasn't a recorded, required operation and maintenance agreement. And I think Keith can answer that as well.
So are both sites owned by the same owner?
No.
Maybe that's it?
They're not owned by the same owner.
They're not? I'm, I'm still trying to figure out how you can dump into somebody else's pond without an agreement.
Can we do it? Can we do it all the time?
You do it all the time?
Mr. Huff can answer all those questions.
In a larger development, it's more likely that that's exactly, that exact thing's happening.
Any other questions of Mr. Dickey? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in support of this? I'm seeing none. We'll turn to the opposition. Uh, Mac Robach?
I'm Mac Robach. I live at eleven eighty Edgebrook. I, my house backs up to Crown Park Apartments. And two years ago, I was president of Old Town Road Neighborhood Association, and when this. We went along with their plan. I did speak at city council saying our neighborhood had no objection to it. But we were concerned about things being tweaked down the road when change of tenant or whatever might come up. And so here we are, you know, two years later, and we're seeing a tweak. Had a good meeting today with Ken Huff, and he explained a lot of things to me that I didn't understand. Uh, first of all, the two things that I thought were catch basins below the apartment are not catch basins. Under their design in nineteen ninety-eight, I believe he said, um, they weren't intended to hold water. And I want to congratulate him if they don't. The water is speeding down. Uh, you can see here, this is one of the catch basins, the, the lower part. There's the main catch basin, and then there's a little, kind of like a porch down below it with riffraff. The creek has eroded back up to this part, because it's about a hundred and fifty feet over the last fifteen years. And now it's taking out the riffraff and the plastic. I do this, bring this up just to show how fast the water is running off just the apartments from their parking lot. Now, Little's drain is not going down this particular catch basin. Their catch basin was already eroded down to bedrock, so there's no clear problem right there. The problem is downstream. is downstream. At the speed of this water coming sudden, it's eroding banks downstream, flooding the Thabor Park more often, the city's having to come in there and scrape off the greenway whenever it gets covered with Milton silt. It's also adding to the flooding down on Linda Circle, where the city's considering buying houses that are routinely flooding, and so you have a similar situation to what's going on at Cassell Street. My point is, the problem with stormwater is that there's no clear enemy. As Cheney would say, there's no bombable target, it's little things all over the place. There's no major thing you can do to rectify this, and one of the things I was kind of disappointed, talking to Keith today, was this kind of defeatist attitude of urban environment, rock terrain. Well, yeah, but water is water, and it's going to do this damage, and so you can say, yes, they're complying with this, yes, they're complying with that, the original thing said, yes, you could feed into these ponds that don't catch water, and everything's fine, but the thing is, the water's still doing what water does, and I have no objection to something new going up there, but just to eliminate any detention at all of the water, and just say, oh, this stuff down behind the apartments is going to take care of it, well, that's just wrong, because it's not even taking care of what's there. You've got to think about, there was a forested area there before they scraped off, and that's like a sponge, when it rains, that's like a sponge, and then it gradually lets the water out. There's not a sponge there anymore, and the idea of these ponds is to somewhat approximate that, it doesn't do it completely, but somewhat. And so, if they can just sort of delay this, and see what we can do to slow this water down, the water coming off the apartments, the water coming, what's going to be coming off their bank property there, I just ask, just delay that, and just work on something that makes a little more sense, instead of just saying, oh, that was just a concept that we approved two years ago, and now here's the real plan, okay? So, just, just take it easy and work something out that's going to deal with water. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I have a question.
Okay, question, Ms. Duggan?
The picture that you showed, is that the water coming out of the stormwater pond, or is it some point before?
Yes.
So, this is the outflow?
Right.
Outflow of the stormwater pond.
Right. I don't have his map, but you were showing a map that had the, yeah, I believe that was it? Um, well, there was another one that showed the-
You got one on Sunday?
Yeah. Okay, um, there are two catch basins behind the apartments. This is one, and this is where the little property is going to drain into that one. The picture I showed you is this other catch basin, and down right here, below at the end of the catch basin. You have the catch basin, or I keep saying that, it's not a catch basin, this hole, you have this hole here, where the water just flows through it, and then there's a berm here, and it goes under the berm to a pipe, and then there's kind of like a little flat area with riffraff, and that's what is being eroded out now. And, I would guess that's going to be gone in about two years, and then it's going to start eroding out the big berm, but of course, the big berm doesn't hold any water back, so it doesn't, you know, I feel kind of foolish even talking about this, but the point is, the water's going fast, and it's going to get, every time it's paved, it's going to get a little faster, and we just need to be careful, because there's going to be little battles all over town.
So, this, the picture you showed, I'm just trying to get it clear in my mind, is not from where this project's stormwater's going to go?
Right.
Okay.
It's right next to it, it just shows-
Right, I understand you're showing what happened.
Neither one of them are slowing the water down, the existing ones, and the only reason there is not this problem at the other one is because that creek had already eroded down to bedrock.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
It's causing problems downstream by streaming out of the water.
All right, thank you.
You've got to think about the speed of the water, it's not an erosion as far as silt's up, you've got to slow the water down.
Thank you, sir. Charles Wilson?
Seven and a half minutes.
I'm Charlie Wilson, 1177 Edgbrook Drive, Winston Salem 27106.
Gary?
This is the approved, approved zoning map, which the applicant made in, oh, July 1st, or about July 1st, 2015, and this was approved, as you see in this, let's see right here, this is the stormwater detention pond, which the applicant proposed to make, and which This is slightly, somewhat blown up, a picture of the stormwater detention basin, and the applicant wishes to eliminate the stormwater detention basin, to add a bank to this location. Now, their intent is to share a detention basin on Crown Park Apartments' property. Crown Park stormwater control may have been adequate when the site in question was heavily wooded. Of course, if you've gone up there, you can see that it's no longer heavily wooded, it will be, it will be almost solid concrete and roofs, and they'd like to add even more. So, the stormwater control is no longer adequate. I mean, just pushing the stormwater over someone else's site will not do the job. Oh, thank you. If you look at this, this is, apologies for not wiping the rainwater off the lens, as you can see, the stormwater is coming out of this building, which is the Lidl, not quite finished yet, running down here, and this is the Crown Park Apartments' area. They're just giving you a stormwater of someone else. This is a stormwater detention basin, the way it's supposed to work is that when there's a heavy rain, that the water is allowed to rise in the basin, but it's more, at a low rate, it's allowed to, it is taken down, out, and the rates for a site this big would be about, oh, a cubic foot per second, or less. In other words, you would want to hold the water for much of it, release it slowly, so Now, stormwater drainage pipes on the Crown Park hillside have shifted, so they're discharging water below the intended discharge area. It should be, stormwater, of course, should be going at least down on this plate, and going over, but the system is not working. And this is a secondary stormwater control, it's failing, probably due to the inadequate detention basin above it. Now, the bottom line is that we need an onsite stormwater detention basin, relying on just passing of the stormwater to someone else isn't working right, it will not work right. This is not the solution to the problem.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Could I ask a question?
Have a question. Mr. Wilson? Ms. Dunigan has a question.
Hi. I was wondering, you, you mentioned that their residents are already seeing erosion problems now, could you describe that a little bit?
Yes, if, well, the, when the stormwater comes out at the rate it's coming, you know, a heavy rain, this is when you'd have to protect against the erosion. If it comes out too fast, it cuts deep gullies into the adjacent properties. We're, we have properties being damaged by these deep gullies, because the stormwater detention system is not working. It has, the problem has increased substantially with the, of course, the grading, taking away all of the vegetation and trees, chasing the wildlife out, including poisonous snakes, one of which happened to bite my wife. But, this is, this is the problem, large gullies diminishes your land, it undercuts trees, which do fall down, and it can be controlled, but the idea of, well, we'll just use our neighbor's detention basin, is not a satisfactory solution.
So, have you seen increased stormwater coming down since this Lidl project was built?
Yes.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. Wilson?
Ms. Wilson? Go away.
Mr. Wilson?
Oh, sorry.
Can you make those, can you let staff use your photographs for our later discussion? Particularly the one of the, of the storm drain pond, and the one of the culvert coming out of the Lidl store right now?
I'd be honored.
Will you let them use those? Okay.
Okay. Ann Heller?
Mr. Chairman, there's two minutes left at this point.
I'm Ann Heller, my address is 1125 Edgbrook Drive, 27106. I'm here to speak in opposition to the plan by Stimmel Associates, because of the increase in runoff, not because it's a bank, but just because there is increased impervious surface. The stormwater system in place is already failing, as you have seen, the, at the base of where the riffraff is being torn away, there's now three feet deep of creek, with the tree roots running across the top, because that's where the land used to be, if you're wondering what the damage is right now, right at that point. I have some questions, are they, you know, are the people developing this site just trying to avoid maintaining a runoff pond? Apparently, it now is required to do so, obviously, it should have been, because what's there for the apartments has not been maintained, it isn't working. I would ask that you please learn from Houston, they have had three 100-year floods in the last 10 years, we need to make plans for the 100-year flood. What, what level of storm has been prepared for? Why isn't that pond being used already that was on the site plan? Why isn't the water from Lidl now draining in that direction? Why wasn't required to be used since that was the plan? Why is it coming after the fact? Please, let's slow down, do not approve this bank at this time, and let's get some questions answered, and think about our future, and knowing what water can do, we have seen it so widespread recently. Thank you.
So, I believe, as I understood the presentation, that pond wasn't required at the time, that was the area where if a, if a storm, if a study said a pond had to be put on the site, that's where it would be, and they, it was determined that they could use the existing pond. Now, whether that was right or wrong, I don't know, but I don't know that the previous plans required that pond to be built at that time. But, anyway, well, I'm going to ask Mr. Huff to talk about this whole issue for us, maybe answer some of your questions.
Putting your problem to the neighbor, I think most of us don't like, we've seen it in small things, our neighbors' rooftop drain coming in our direction, and that sort of thing, but to have this whole paved area is unthinkable, I think.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe that is all the time.
That's four seconds.
Four seconds. Anyone here speaking four seconds? If not, then I'll declare the public hearing closed, and, Mr. Huff, will you come just talk about this whole stormwater situation out there, and? I'm sure you have a question or two.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, I guess I need to back up and get a running start at this with all the discussion and what's going on. From a development standpoint, as mentioned earlier, this came in, in the 1997 era, I don't know if you could read this, but this was the DS Atlantic Plan that came in and was approved by the planning board, which had included Track 8 within that, which is currently the Lidl store, and it did denote the current dry detention pond that's on the Crown Apartments' complex as being included into that study. And to that point, Stimmel did submit to our office a plan which did include that, and did denote that the pond was sized during that time to include this development. So, basically, under Chapter 75 of the city code, which is our post-construction ordinance, if a developer makes substantial progress on a site, or has a pre-existing stormwater facility prior to the new ordinance rules that, that basically occurred in 2008, they're allowed to make use of that existing facility. So, what you have here is exactly what was mentioned, is this tract was included in their overall planning approval in 97, which they utilized that existing stormwater facility, and that's what's allowing them to make use of the Crown facility. Yes, we do not have operation and maintenance agreements on that type of facility, we don't have sureties, we don't have easements on that type of facility, because it's an old-rules pond, and that's why there's no agreement with the owner and Crown Apartments for use, operation, maintenance, et cetera. But, that is what allowed them to make use of that pre-existing facility. So, that's just a general overview, I'll be glad to entertain any specific questions you have.
We're explaining their ability now to not build the pond as shown on the site, but to go to this other pond.
Yeah, because they found that with this pre-existing pond, they submitted calculations that that pond on the apartment complex property was sized to accept the entire track there, Track 8 at the time.
A question for you, it was 97, so it's, was designed differently than it would be designed today, obviously. What would, so it, the new discharge can go into an old design, how is that affecting the outflow of that pond?
Yes.
Because that's what we rely on now, is you control that in a controlled release, so you don't see the downstream, is, how is that functioning now compared to the current standards?
Yes, ma'am, the pond that's on site right now controls the pre-develop- The pond that's on site right now controls the pre-development discharge rate, or the post-development discharge rate, I should say, to the pre-development runoff rate for the 10-year storm. So it's only controlling the rate for a 10-year design storm. Anything below it goes through unattenuated, and anything above it goes through pretty much unattenuated as well. The current standard that we employ is two-year storm, 10-year storm, 25-year storm, heat and volume control. That's the difference between the control you have on site here that's serving the site in question versus a new, new controls pond.
So is there any concern about adding more water to, I understand it's available under the rules, but is there any, anything available to at least have that pond? I haven't, I have not actually seen this, but looking at some of the pictures. Any maintenance requirements on those?
There are no O and M requirements. In 1997, there was no O and M, there were no sureties, there were no easement agreements. It was, it was just purely construct the pond and leave it as is. Nowadays, all of those things are in place, but that doesn't apply here.
Are they inspected? Do you inspect these ponds?
We do inspect them, but keep in mind that we don't have any operation and maintenance agreements. We don't have any surety payments, so we issue folks letters, but they're commonly referred to as the toothless dog letter because we don't have any codified ordinance provisions to carry out any enforcement.
At the time, this is a phased development, of course. I mean, it's over the years since 97 or whatever else. There's no, you don't have the capacity to require a later, you know, late-phase part of the development. There's no condition that the original 15, 20-year-old stormwater device has to be functioning even to a 97 standard?
No, we can't retroactively go back to them and require them to meet the current development standards. If they were approved under the development standards of that day, meaning 1997 in this case, that's all.
And I can see the practical problem is you've got an owner of the storm device, which is not the current developer of a different piece of property that's not even owned by them, so why would they have any possible incentive to, you know, repair the device?
Agree.
Another question. The original design for a potential theoretical retention basin where the bank is now being requested to go, do you know where that, the discharge from that basin would have gone? Would it have ultimately gone to the same place?
Yeah, I mean, considering they still have one outflow from the site, the riprap apron that you saw from the 36-inch pipe in the gentleman's photo, it's my understanding that would be the ultimate discharge point for the site. Right there.
So any additional construction would utilize the same two ponds? Is that what I understand?
For this tract, yes.
This tract. And what happens if it just can't contain it?
Again, this, this goes to a stormwater facility that has no operation and maintenance agreement. They have paid no surety to the city for operation and maintenance. There is no easement for the city to access this facility. So there are no remedies on our books that we could use to restore.
Wow.
And this was, this was approved and constructed in the 90s. So this is a different era that, that, that we, we don't currently employ these, these standards. It's much more robust.
And unlike a subdivision street, there's no dedication of these old ponds ever made to the public. I mean, it's not in the.
Dedication, nobody wants these things.
Sure, of course.
They're a liability, so.
Absolutely.
The, the thing is, putting the onus on people nowadays to maintain them via those sureties, those O and M agreements and those easements.
The site plan shows you the proposed pond, which is not there, which you're asking to replace with this bank, okay? And if this bank were not approved, is anything requires them to build the pond that's on that site as a proposed pond?
No, sir. The, the Track Eight that they got approved in 97 is all-encompassing for that, so it wouldn't require an additional stormwater structure.
So if the bank doesn't go there, pond's probably not going there either, though, right?
There you go.
And is the stormwater tie-in to the pond on the Crown Park Apartments, is that already accomplished and it's complete, complete now?
The conveyance system from the Lidl site to the. Yes, it is. We, we looked at that on site today from the, the exit of this, this pipe right here all the way to where it goes into that dry pond facility. To the citizens' points, does it need maintenance? Yes, it does, but it, it is in existence.
Mr. Huff, let me, let me take you back even further than you were, than you went. And I'm approaching this as a Winston-Salem taxpayer. What has been the destruction of this water downstream that you have been part of or have seen as part of the city and been responding to?
Yeah. As far as this watershed in general, I think that's what you're getting at.
Yes, yes, this watershed going down toward the Tha.
This watershed, like they mentioned, this is in excess of 400 acres. It's a urbanized area. It doesn't have a lot of stormwater management in, in some parts of this section. High relief, meaning there are steep slopes, very, very fast topography to convey water. That leads to the head cutting that you saw in the pictures and whatnot. I have had interaction with some of the citizens going back 10 to 15 years, citizens that have lived off of Monarchus Creek or on Monarchus Creek directly. So it's been a longstanding problem that pre-exists this development, but very sensitive watershed. It is urbanized, and citizens have been voicing concerns.
Is this the same water that floods Bathabra Gardens?
Correct, yes.
Does it flood any other developments down that way?
Well, as mentioned, this is in a floodplain once it gets to Monarchus Creek, so there is floodplain and floodway through that area.
How much does the city have to do when there is a flood like that? Are there any costs that are incurred by the city?
Well, your routine maintenance costs, cleaning inlets, inspections, stuff like that. We have a FEMA buyout program where if you have a flood ravage property in a flood zone, then the city will work with you to remove that property. We have that program. It's been going on for about 10 years.
And the city has to be involved in the money of that?
Correct. The local government has to broker that money. They can't directly give it to a citizen, but that citizen needs to have documented flooding of their structure because what the, the program does, it removes the flood ravage structure from the floodplain.
And you're considering that on some structures now?
That's an active program that goes on that if we engage a citizen or a citizen calls out as that being an issue, then we will investigate that.
Are there any citizens that have requested that at this point?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's been.
On this watershed?
Oh, in this watershed? No, we don't have an active grant in this particular watershed right now.
What's happening on Linda Circle?
Linda Circle, we've had several structures that have had grant funding, one that's had been removed. Let's see, we've had one formally removed, one had 100% grant funding but couldn't deliver clear title to the property, and another has expressed interest.
Okay. All of this is also fed by another pond that's in the same area that was shared with Wells Fargo, I guess, on the southern side of that. Is that by 98 standards or is that after the 2008 standards? So that's an old one as well? Is there some approval for some recent landscaping on that pond?
We can't require anything on those.
So.
Because basically, again, there are no easements, no O and M agreements, no maintenance responsibilities on them.
Now, the, the picture that we were showing from back up behind Lidl where this bank will, will flow into that, should that be muddy coming out of that land like that?
That right there is probably, I mean, you've got a development site that's under active construction. Do we want it that turbid? No, we do not. And that's why we went there today with those folks to re-inspect the site. We did find some items that the developer is going to take care of. We did an erosion control report that that entity is going to receive. Actually, it's in their inboxes right now. So do we want to see that turbid water leaving the site? No, we don't. But that's something we have to keep active tabs on.
So whose property was louder cleaning up the mud from today?
I believe that was their property.
Was that from Lidl's or it was right next to the road in Crown Park?
I heard it was the stone in this area right here that.
Well, isn't that on Crown Park property?
Yeah, assuming so, yeah.
So, so you're saying that the developer, what?
So it was on the Lidl property.
Where's the, where's the property line, what you're looking at right here?
I cannot speak to where the exact cross is.
Now, do you think that the storm drain pond that is down there, based on what we were hearing from these folks here, do you think it is working as it should work?
As far as being a 10-year pre-post pond designed in the mid-'90s, yes. From what we've seen and the calculations that we've been given from Stimel, it is functioning as that.
Has Stimel actually visited that pond?
They sealed a set of calculations that they provided to us. I can't answer if they've been there or not, but they've sealed via professional engineer a set of calculations that they delivered to us, saying it was functioning as such.
Before you, before you ask another question, let me jump in here real quick. I want to make sure we address what we're supposed to address. This is a very interesting conversation, however, I want to redirect us back to the issue at hand, and that is whether or not we approve the request to have a bank there. We're not able to make a decision on whether we require stormwater, right? The conver, retention pond. The conversation is clear that there is an issue, right? But we can't solve that issue today. What we can do is vote on the issue that's before us. So I think we can.
Well, I'll be glad to get into that later discussion. I don't agree.
You don't agree that we can address that right now?
With, with your conclusions.
I'm just focused on what's on the agenda, and we've got some other things on the agenda.
And it is, because, I mean, there is, there is the possibility, I mean, we could say no to this, and they could put a, they could come up with other means, and we can get into that when we discuss that down the road. Are there normally trees that are allowed to grow in these stormwater ponds?
No, not in the embankment. There are certain zones that you can plant trees on, on a wet pond or something like that, but they are not allowed to grow in the embankment.
So the fact that there is a tree growing on the embankment in this is a, is, is something that is a problem, but you can't do anything about it?
Correct.
Because you don't have any teeth?
Again, we don't have any operation and maintenance agreements, no easements, no sureties.
Did Stimel point that out to you when they sealed these plans? That there were problems with these?
No, that's not their agenda. Their agenda is to determine if that site was sized appropriately, or the pond was sized appropriately for the site in question.
So they, they had no responsibility to say that this is appropriate for the amount of water that's flowing through there?
Correct.
Thank you.
So my question is for staff. So without the current request for rezoning, what can be built on that site right now? What can be developed?
Just, just the approved pond or, as I think we've discovered, that the pond doesn't necessarily have to be built, no, no other structure.
No other structure? Okay. Okay.
Is this, is this the end of the development opportunities on all of those originally? All the tracks?
No, I think you still have part of Track One on the other side of Fair Lawn that hasn't been built on.
Well, they haven't been built, but there are approved buildings there. So, I mean, I, I think, I'm, I'm guessing your question, there is no, if this were, if the pond were to go away and you were to grant this approval, or if you were to not, either way, on the two tracked ones on the north side of Fair Lawn and on the south side of Fair Lawn, I believe they are 100% maxed out as far as the amount of building they could put on there on those two tracks. Now, across Silas Creek, on the other tracks, there are, there's other potential development area, but not on these two.
Let me ask follow-up on that. Is Crown Park fully developed out? Because, I mean, theoretically, that's their pond, they could build more there, and it would go into the same drain, right?
I can't answer that question, whether or not it's.
But it's relevant to this.
My question really, I guess, is how many more opportunities are there like this to, you know, take advantage of an existing 97-designed pond, this 97? How many more opportunities are there with this original approval? Are there? And it doesn't sound like, it sounds like there either aren't any, or there aren't many, or, you know?
There are several hundred quote-unquote "old-rules facilities" in the municipal limits. Would they lend themselves to this type of coupling? I don't know, can't speak to that, but I can tell you that there are several hundred of them in our municipal limits.
Yeah, yeah, I know about old-rules ponds, but I was just talking about this development. Are we at the end of the development opportunities on this originally-approved multi-paced development? Hard to know because it's not been the subject of this case, yeah.
Paul, I got a good question. What, what we're reviewing with the site plan amendment, what are our requirements in terms of, is it, if it meets the standards, then we should, or?
When there's a site.
Alan, we're getting a little bit beyond what we would normally do for some, you know, real concerns, but.
I'll just read directly from the UDO, because that has the rules for both site plan review and site plan amendments. When there's a site plan amendment, it goes back through the same procedures and rules for, for the original site plan review. It says, "Under the Planning Board's responsibilities for site plan review, planning boards shall review all requests for permits requiring a site plan review and not exempted in a different section to assure that requirements of Section B 2-5 and other applicable provisions the UDO are met. The planning board shall approve any requests for permits which meet all the requirements of this ordinance and deny any such requests which do not meet all the requirements of this ordinance. The planning board may, as part of its approval, require the following conditions to reduce impacts associated with the project." And it has a whole list of them. The one I think you're zeroing in on is down Paragraph H, "Stormwater management plans as recommended by planning staff and appropriate agencies." In this case, we rely on the Stormwater Department to do the review, make the recommendations on that, and of course, Keith is speaking to you in terms of what, what they can do under the city ordinance requirements.
So essentially, the staff expert says this is allowed under the rules. I mean, that's what I'm hearing you say?
It complies with Chapter 75 of the city code, more expressly, 75-105-E3 of the city code.
So that's the city code, not the stormwater regs?
That is the local stormwater regs.
Okay. So with our local program, then, there's, that is going to take precedence over federal or state plans that would require meeting current standards for a discharge?
No, basically, if they had a pre-existing control, then basically, they're just subject to our current rule. And basically, yes, they have a vested right because they had a stormwater management plan that was approved. Planning board had approved that tract as a part of their overall management plan. They made substantial progress, i.e., the pond was constructed prior to the effective date of our new ordinance, so they were deemed compliant under Chapter 75.
Paul, staff has recommended approval on this. You heard anything? David, change your opinion?
I recommend denial.
Motion by Mr. Younger and second by Mr. Bryan. My question?
I've heard a lot of concerns, but if I'm looking straight at the ordinance, it sounds like we are bound to go by what the stormwater management staff is saying what complies with the present ordinance. So I don't, I haven't, based on what Keith is saying.
So, I don't, I haven't, based on what Keith is saying, I haven't heard anything that gives us the ability to recommend a different thing than we did.
We have a motion for denial. Is any discussion on that?
Let me mention why I feel this way, and you've probably gotten that from some of the gist. We, as taxpayers, are going to pay for this. I mean, we already are paying for the runoff that's occurring down there, and we're stuck. We've got a 97-approved pond or a 98-built pond under different rules. We're stuck. The neighbors' yards are getting enroded. You've seen what's happened down at Lowman's Plaza in that area. You've seen what's happened in Botha-Bever Park and a variety of places like that. We're going to end up paying for that along the way, and we've also just added in the Sheetz parking lot to that same issue when we voted in 2015. Now, there are ways out of this that the developer could do, and at least in my sight. They could put an underground retention under the bank if they wanted to, which would be under new standards, which would control the water, and then would release it in a manner that would not further cause damages to that. They could, I don't know what we're going to do with this that's on the screen right now. Supposedly, those apartments, we're supposed to have a Type III buffer between them, but you can see the width of that based on these guys right now. So, what the departments are looking at is a drain and gravel and a wall, not a Type III buffer that was supposed to be there. So, somewhere in all of this, a Winston-Salem staff member approved the change from, the allowed the pond to go to this, because in our original, we said it was the other way, and it did have a little sentence that said relocation or installation of any stormwater treatment device into a buffer area vegetation designated to remain or close proximity would require staff change approval at minimum and may require a site plan amendment. I'm just sorry that staff didn't come back with a site plan amendment, as I think would have helped us in this, because now we wouldn't be having this discussion. We'd all felt comfortable with this new level of plan, but now we're caught in a bind of causing further damage downstream and not being able to do much about it, other than tell the developer, well, come up with another plan, and we'd be glad to see a bank there. But there are other ways to do it than the way that has been proffered right now.
Yeah, I want to say that I understand the kind of loophole that we're dealing with here and the grandfathering of the old pond. My concern, though, is really with, when this original special rezoning came to the Planning Board, I assumed we were voting on the site plan that was presented to us, which included a pond. And I believe that that influenced the decision-makers in terms of granting this special rezoning. It didn't have to be granted, it was granted under the assumption that a pond would be on-site. And I had other issues with this development, so I actually didn't vote for it when it came through, but I heard one of the neighbors, Mr. Robach, I believe, say that their neighborhood did not oppose this when it came forward. Perhaps it was because they saw that there was a pond on the plan, and so it influenced the decision-making process. And now I feel like we, in a sense, it's almost like a bait and switch. You believe that you're voting for one thing, and then you find out the situation is not as it was presented to you. So, that's my big concern with this.
The other discussion? We have a motion for denial. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Denied seven to two. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next item on your agenda is zoning document W 3344, petitioner is Burger King Corporation, number 1283, and the site is .8 acre, located on the northwest corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Fifth Street. And the request is to remove the subject property from the Martin Luther King overlay. This is a zoning, the legacy map showing the property, it's actually located in the Center City, GMA 1, where the promotion of pedestrian-friendly development is recommended for pedestrian orientation and reduce the visual dominance of parking areas. That's one of the primary recommendations applicable here in the Center City urban neighborhoods. This is a zoning map showing the subject property there on the left, highlighted in yellow. It's current location of Burger King Restaurant with a drive-through. It's in a heavily urbanized area there at the intersection of Fifth Street and MLK. You have to the north, East Winston Shopping Center, with a mixture of uses there. Across the street, you have multifamily apartments, and to the south, you have an automotive garage repair facility. All those properties are also within the MLK overlay. In 2011, the SG Atkins CDC spearheaded a development to come up with standards to really promote and protect pedestrian-oriented development, urban development, urban form in this area, recognizing its proximity there to the Innovation Corridor and the Winston-Salem State University and the existing amount of pedestrian traffic there. So, basically, the overlay, as we talked about earlier in the staff presentation of the text amendment, which you just recommended approval for, requires buildings to be pulled up to the street in a pedestrian-oriented fashion, and also requires some degree of transparency on the ground floor and building entrances on the ground floor facing the street. Excuse me. To the right, that aerial photograph just shows a little bit more of the full extent of the MLK overlay boundaries, stretching to the north from Cleveland Avenue to the south to US 421. Aerial photograph, again, showing the subject property there. It's located within the East Northeast Area Plan, which is pretty recent adopted area plan, recommended in 2015 by you and adopted by the City Council. It is located within the Activity Center, the East Winston Activity Center, and that also recommends pedestrian-oriented form, buildings closer to the street, parking to the side or rear. The next images are taken on site, and probably most everybody is familiar with this property. It's a very visible, very focal point there along this corridor of Trade Street and MLK, excuse me, being a corner lot. Also, recently, the East End Master Plan has been commenced with city funding, and also, part of the goal there is to reinforce the pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development, again, capitalizing on its location between the university and the Innovation Corridor. Excuse me. This is looking to the northwest, the East Winston Shopping Center. This is looking north, the subject property's on the left, this is Martin Luther King on the right, looking across Martin Luther King, the multifamily, and across Fifth Street, the automotive repair facility, office building located directly to the west. As I mentioned, the site, the request would allow for the development of the site, which is not pedestrian-oriented and not consistent with the purpose of the MLK. So, the request is to go to straight highway business, where there's no requirement to pull the buildings up the street, no requirement for ground-level transparency, and no requirement for entrances on the street. Again, this is right, really, in the middle of the MLK overlay, so it kind of begs the question, if this property is taken out of the overlay, why even have the overlay? The site is highly visible corner lot. The manner in which this site develops will certainly influence the character of this portion of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. And the request would establish a precedent for other properties along this portion of MLK to be removed from the overlay. If this one is taken out, why would others not be taken out? Also, the site is within the East Winston Activity Center, as I mentioned earlier, which recommends pedestrian-friendly character and buildings located closer to the street. And finally, the site is within the Growth Management Area 1, Center City Area. So, really, we have four ingredients here that are promoting pedestrian-oriented development here. Certainly, right now, we have, it's located within Growth Management Area 1, we have it within the Activity Center of the recently adopted area plan, we have the UDO, which requires through the overlay, buildings to be pulled up to the street along this. It's about a 30-acre area within the MLK overlay. And finally, we have the East Winston Master Plan that is under commencement right now that the city is helping to fund. Staff's recommendation is for denial, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Chief issue here is one of parking. Am I to understand that? Because if the building expands further north, as the picture indicated, we're going to have less parking going that way. Am I correct?
Well, I mean, to some degree, I guess, it's easy to get into a hypothetical redevelopment scenario of this site. The request is to take it completely out of the overlay. And again, the overlay's three main components are that buildings do be pulled up within five to 10 feet, five to 10 feet, excuse me, of the right-of-way, and also that you would have ground-level transparency, not just blank walls, and that there be some form of an entrance, a pedestrian entrance to the street, just to make it pedestrian-oriented character where people enjoy walking by.
And let me just clarify, the overlay isn't saying you can't have parking or you've got to have reduced parking. It's only speaking to the location of the parking in relation to the street and the building and all that.
Correct.
I have a question. What is the percentage of the buildings? How many buildings would comply with this style of architecture, or the style of having the building pull up to the street right now?
You mean, within this particular corridor?
Yeah, within the overlay, yeah.
Probably the majority.
It is the majority.
No, I would say probably the majority don't.
Because all properties that you showed, none of them, of course, comply.
Right. There's a church directly to the south that does...
We did have Forsyte Seafood a few years ago that came in and did an expansion, and that complied.
Right.
We did have the State Credit Union that was looking at a site on here, and we worked with them to the point where they could comply as well.
I think it's a great idea. I'm just saying, when someone wants, are we putting, this is something to think about. I think we are placing, we are potentially placing an unaffordable or, you know, something that's just going to actually slow the redevelopment of properties. I think it is potential, potentially, I think we are potentially doing that, but, I mean, I'm going to be, you know...
It all depends on the vision for the area.
Yeah, I agree.
And the vision for the area, as described in the adopted plans and in the initiation by SG Atkins CDC for this overlay several years ago, the vision was for a urban pedestrian-oriented happen, so if that is the vision, then this is the mechanism to assure that. And I go back to the, you remember Ed McMahon with Urban Land Institute, who was here 10 years ago for our 60th anniversary, and he talked about community setting their standards that fit with them, and it's not just anywhere USA and all that, but in areas where you want a particular character, it's incumbent on the communities to say what they expect and see if the developers comply.
So, earlier in this meeting, we passed UDO 282, which allows variance to the MLK overlay.
Yes, so one land...
If that was, if that was passed before you had done the staff report, would you still have denied this request?
Yes, we would have recommended denial because of this rezoning request, take it out, because this rezoning request would go back to general use without the overlay guiding it, and you could have basically what you could have on Stratford Road, parking lot in front of the building there, you know, separated from the sidewalks in the street.
And speaking just briefly of the vision for the area, we found that most national franchises have an urban form. They have an urban model, it's just, including Burger King, it's just a matter of whether or not they're made to do it.
Is the CVS within the overlay?
It is.
It was built before the overlay came into place.
Because I was wondering how we got the drive-through in there.
Right.
Okay, so that was pre-overlay.
Right.
All right. Well, let's have the hearing, and then we'll... First person signed up, Tom Brogan.
My name is Tom Brogan. Address is 13 West Austin Street, skinny Atlas, New York, 13152. I'm Director of Real Estate for Carols LLC. We are the owner-operator of the Burger King Restaurant. We acquired that facility in June of 2012, together with 277 other restaurants at that time, many of which are in your, in Forsyte County, and since that time, we've reimagined, remodeled, replaced 500 restaurants. This inquiry in this app, this request really stems from, as part of that effort, we explored internally, which is a matter of sending out a professional to do a site investigation report, to put together, you know, just to understand what might need to happen in order for us to improve this property. As part of that, we really didn't go anywhere with that information at that time. The city reached out to us after having been in the city and making the inquiries to the planning office and so forth, and asked us to come in to have a conversation with regards to what we could do or what they could do to encourage us to invest in that neighborhood. We came in, had a meeting with seven, eight, nine representatives of the city, and were encouraged to proceed, you know, with the project, understanding that sometime in 2011, actually, I think it was 2012, they instituted over the highway business zoning some, you know, the overlay district, which was, you know, put further constraints on this property. I'll give you a quick overview of the property. This is an overview, which is, this is, I think, a .8 acre parcel, of which, there's a 14-foot elevation difference from the bottom of this green to this curb line, and then this curb cut to this curb cut, there's a nine-foot elevation difference from the street. So, we're dealing with a smaller parcel or a parcel, but it has both topography, shape, and geography issues with it. Okay? So, we worked with the city just to explore what we could do with regards to the intent of the overlay. And we're very proactive, we've provided a number of plans, we provided a lot of dialogue, we provide a lot of experience. We've been operating restaurants for 50 years. We have over 800 restaurants in our portfolio today, and we had an additional portfolio previously. So, we have, we've done a lot of urban development, redevelopment, and we talked about the things we could do and the things we couldn't do. With regards to this project, we have, because of the slopes and the topography here, we have challenges to push ourselves within five and no more than 10 feet of the property line, particularly on two properties. We also have sloping variances as you go from south to north. And so, we looked at, you know, we said, this is what we, we really can't push the building up to that, nor, you know, from a function standpoint, it just doesn't work and allow us to continue as we exist today. And we are existing there today. There are a number of inefficiencies with this particular property, and what we were proposing or exploring to do is to make significant improvements, both to the physical plant, to the character of the property, the character neighbor, to institute certain elements relative, that are parallel with the intent of the overlay district. So, you know, we've, subsequently, we've had more than one meeting. I think we've had three meetings with city officials, either independently, and multiple city officials, either independently, or one of those meetings was also coordinated through Councilman Montgomery's office, where we brought in some other neighbors, property owners, and presented this plan, much similar dialogue of what we could and couldn't do, the constraints of what, you know, what was placed relative to the overlay district on our enterprise and our redevelopment, our intent to potentially reinvest. And, you know, frankly, by our perception, in a nutshell, it seemed to be very supportive by everyone that attended our neighborhood meeting. Subsequent to that, you know, we, and we said to the city early on, we... Subsequent to that, you know, we, and we said to the city on the, early on, we said, this isn't really on our radar, you know, because in order to do those, that kind of development schedule or redevelopment schedule, you're trying to get yourself out ahead. You have to. You have to go out and spend some money and do some due diligence ahead of time to keep the ball rolling. This isn't really a candidate to reimage. I mean, there are so many shortcomings to that project as it exists today, that you really want to, if you're going to do it, you want to do it right. And so, the idea of elongating the building, you're not really pushing any closer roadway, you're not really pulling it back any further. And the reason you can't push it closer roadway is because you've got the topography issue. You know, this was just, if there was, if there was a variance provision within the code, then we would be seeking a variance. We'd look, and we'd be talking about a unique circumstance, which this is. We'd be talking about geography. We'd be talking about topography, shape, and those things. But in this case, we have what we have, and we're trying to make a very significant improvement to the corridor and neighborhood. Those elements with regards to pedestrian elements, we can certainly accommodate that. We can accommodate pedestrian gateways to and from the restaurant to the sidewalk. With regards to pulling the projects to the street front, we've done that in the past with similar projects where you incorporate items like columns and rarring fencing and other structural elements where you're pulling the development of the street front. And with a lot of success. And that's similar to what was instituted when they did the development of the CBS just below us. The difference with that parcel and ours, they were able to put that building on one side of the property. It's supposed to be pushed up right in the corner to two sides. But it's like a two-acre site, and I'm working off point-six acres. So, that's my greatest challenge. There really isn't, as we understand it today, alternatives. I've talked to other property owners in the area to see, you know, what might be available as alternatives. And it wouldn't really change, frankly, the challenges that we face relative to, you know, to having, to having, you know, a good maneuverable site, you know, having, inviting to the passerby or pedestrians so that they're comfortable to go in that location. I mean, I was there today, and some guys broke out a card table and started playing cards in the parking lot. I mean, when we make these investments, we have very significant transformations in the neighborhoods that we go with. So, what, a lot of things that are going on that aren't necessarily conducive to, you know, to your business and to the neighborhood in advance of tend to tame down as a result of our efforts. So, this is a plan of, so this is the existing facility. As I said, currently, you've got a nine-to-ten-foot elevation difference between where this curb cut is, this location. This is, this is an as-built or an altus survey of existing. You've got a fourteen-foot elevation here, and then you've got a significant kind of taper off here.
I'm sorry, is there any discussion about leveling that off? Is that part of the discussion that you had?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm familiar with the site, and yes, it is some concern of mine, safety issues for folks, especially in the winter seasons, of walking on that property where it's so hilly, slippage?
Correct. So, and that's part of the challenge with, you know, we're, the requirements today under the ADA are pretty challenging. So, those are things that we'll have to incorporate in relative to this plan regardless. I mean, you know, so, we're likely not going to have a straight shot, you know, going to the building. We're probably going to have to do something where we're going to come back and to switch back and get down so that we contain that elevation getting over to the building. But this is the plan, this being north, Fifth Street, MLK. There's a median on MLK. So, this drawing here was what we worked with with the city in terms of introduction to the project. These curb cuts are as they exist today. Okay? We didn't change the positioning of these. The building is very similar in terms of its setback and orientation to the roadway. If you can see this, it shadowed here is the existing building, which the corners are here, here, and here. But this distance, we can start to tame that slope coming in and out. This location here, we can tame this slope going up here. This plan would require five-foot elevation, like probably a five-foot retaining wall on the north end to level off that site. It introduces an escape lane that does not exist today. It introduces calmer radiuses to maneuver this site. So, anyone who's ever tried to drive this site, it's very, very, very difficult. And again, we inherited this, and probably more important with this proposal than this investment is, is our business is about what goes on in the restaurant, not what goes on outside it in theory. So, we have to be efficient inside this restaurant to make everything else function well. So, when you come in, we're expedient. When you use the drive-through, we're expedient. Everything sort of stems from the ergonomics of what's going on inside, and today, that doesn't happen. Today, it's a mess. So, by introducing a new project to this location as opposed to trying to put lipstick on what's there, we won't, we wouldn't cure anything. It would be hardly worth the effort. So, the two criterias that were introduced, and, you know, this project is probably what sort of stimulated the thought of maybe there's, we need to create some wiggle room within the overlay to make these things happen. I understand, and we're a hundred percent behind the intent of the overlay, and our intentions would be to develop this, to incorporate those elements that were incorporated CBS with regards to the columns and the rarring fencing type improvements, to put in the pedestrian elements, to build something in here. Someone said maybe do something that's associated with Winston-Salem State. You know, we'll utilize this area as a enhancement to the community, to the extent we can, absolutely. This is a project that was done in Cleveland. This is a little bit older. This facility, at the time, it was acquired. This is, this was in an overlay district. This was new urbanism. This was the exact same scenario. This was a boarded-up facility at the time. And we took, frankly, something that was closed and was a nuisance to the neighborhood, made an investment. This has a drive-through coming around the front of this. We incorporated the, those elements at the street front that pulls this. This doesn't feel like it's in back and way back from the roadway. This is pulled towards the street. This was the rendering pre-development that we introduced to the city at the time. So, in short, we're asking for your support. We're kind of on a timeframe here where, as part of this inquiry from the city to us and vice versa, we've, you know, we're essentially stealing a project or resources that we're going to go somewhere else to a different community and potentially investing here. We made that very clear when we started out with this effort. We're not looking to be inconsistent with what's trying to be, trying to be achieved by the overlay district by any means. In fact, as these items came up, we had answers, I think, for everything, at least by our vision. And we shared, we're totally transparent with the challenges, totally transparent with potential solutions, and we would honor what we said we would do to the end. So, in that, in that regards, we would be happy to answer any questions and request, ultimately, that the board look favorably upon our request. We do understand the challenges relative to the code elements.
We've used all the time. I'm going to ask you one question. Given this alternative compliance, can this site plan work? Is there enough flexibility in the staff or not? Or is it still?
No, it wouldn't.
Still wouldn't work?
Because you've got basically two bays of parking between the building and the street. And what we're talking about is something that would allow drive-through, but not a field of parking between the building and the street. And just a little reminder, this is a general-use zoning request. We've been talking about a lot of site plan details, and I just want to remind the board that there's nothing that has been shown that can be relied on, given that it's a general-use zoning request.
Yeah. We simply have followed the instructions, you know, relative to when we came into the city. We're not throwing any curveballs at anyone. We're just trying to be expedient, and we're going along the provisions of the guidance that we were gathering from the city as we came in, or they solicited us to come in for this investment.
Okay. We might have some more questions, and the time is up. But Ms. Johnson, you're here, and I'm going to let you speak for a couple of minutes since no one signed up in opposition. I'll give you a couple more minutes.
And I'll take two.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Jocelyn Johnson. My address is two-four-two-six Edison Court. And I can support the project as it's been presented. There needs to be some flexibility in what's happening along the corridor. The CBS project was talking about the idea of using pedestrian-friendly kinds of entities with an open space where the neighbors could come in after they go into the store, not to be visible to everybody's walking along the street, not to be visible to everyone who's driving along the street, but to be able to go into the store, do whatever they're going to do, and then come out and share time, sit time with their neighbors and friends. The one thing that we don't want to do is to increase the heat allowance that is within the community. So, you have more pavement in place, which means that it's going to be hotter and hotter within that urban core. To be able to look at the businesses back, I think, brings the flexibility that we want to see in the community. Unbeknownst to a lot of people, there are businesses that are right on the street. They weren't designed like that. For, they are on the street because of the widening of Martin Luther King over the years. So, it's not because that they chose to do that. And I look at Marshall Baptist Church as one of the examples. The church sits on the corner now because three-eleven has been widened at least twice in the history of the church. So, I said you support it because I think it does bring flexibility, and maybe we need to stop and rethink the overlay district so that we can have true pedestrian interaction within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. No one signed up. Is anyone here in opposition to this? There are none. Declare the public hearing closed.
So, I was reading the notes from the neighborhood council meeting. It was like that Evelyn Acre was in attendance, Ms. Hardisty, Ms. Davis. Looks like Councilmember Montgomery was there. I'm just curious, do we have a representative from there who could kind of give us some insight as to what happened? I see Ms. Davis there. I don't want to put her on the spot, but it would be good for me to hear.
She's been thrown the spot before.
Let's put her on the spot.
Yeah, she does. She's used to it.
Good evening. I'm Carol Davis, executive director of the Simon Green Atkins Community Development Corporation at nineteen-twenty-two South Martin Luther King Junior Drive and two-seven-one-oh-seven. Yes, I was at that meeting, and I called together some of the surrounding property owners, Ms. Hardisty and Evelyn Acre at Mechanics and Farmers Bank and a few others. It was our intent with the overlay district to follow the vision that was really set by the neighbors in the neighborhood meetings that we had in two thousand eleven, when we started this process. We convened numerous meetings. We had opportunity to look at different urban forms and had people vote with clickers in meetings as to what they thought was the best way to go in developing the vision for this corridor. And overwhelmingly, people chose a more urban form, not the suburban model, which shows a lot of parking right up on the street and the building sitting back. So, we followed that vision. We looked at some other communities. We looked at what's going on downtown, and, you know, the people spoke, and they asked for, you know, particularly as you come from the south up to the north, you know, the Winston-Salem State buildings sit up on the street. There was a vision that our students would, and they do, walk north on Martin Luther King, and that if we could reorient some of the commercial development so that it is along the street and that it is pedestrian-friendly, that that would be the way to go. It was not our intent to discourage any new development. In fact, I don't know any new development that has been denied since this overlay has been in place. It has been slow-going in terms of finding investors to put new businesses or new housing on the corridor. But we haven't turned anybody away. And just like Burger King is here tonight, it is my hope that we can still find a way to create a site plan that works for everyone. I understand that the, a staff person from the city-county planning department did do some kind of drawing. I haven't seen it. It hasn't been presented here tonight. But, you know, our intent is, yes, we do want to see an improved Burger King. We think that, you know, would be a great signal to the community that Burger King wants to be a viable business and in the neighborhood, that they appreciate the community and the patronage of that business there. So, we do want to see, you know, business investment in the corridor, and, but at the same time, we do want to see some uniformity of design. And so, any new businesses that come, you know, are aesthetically appealing, that it's in keeping with the pedestrian nature, that it's consistent with the vision that people have for the area.
May I ask you a question, ma'am? You mentioned that you don't know of any development that has been denied since the overlay was adopted. Is there a current overlay that has, that is similar to this overlay that we're discussed earlier?
Well, the only two overlays you have are the Winston overlay downtown in the core and the, and this overlay. And if you, you might remember that there was one instance where we had to bring you an alternate compliance, and that was for the Hampton Inn being constructed right downtown. And it was a pretty minor variance. It requires the buildings in that case, in the Winston overlay as opposed to this overlay, to be pulled right up to the sidewalk. And their plan had a few variations because of planters and the, I guess, the way the building was structured, where they just needed a two or three feet here and there of, I mean, they were facing the sidewalk, but it wasn't a hundred percent building right up on the sidewalk. So, we brought you that. We felt that it accomplished the objectives there and recommended that you approve that variation.
You have a question as well from Ms. Davis. I like how you clarified that the intent of the overlay was never to discourage development. However, it would be nice for things to be more pedestrian-friendly. So, are there some things that you think, even with the proposed development, it might be more pedestrian-friendly?
Well, he mentioned the corner, you know, how you could probably do some, I'm not a planner, I don't speak planning language, but perhaps there's, you know, like in the cor, in CBS's case there, they have a nice pedestrian corner where, pedestrian-friendly corner with a nice brick paved area and some benches. You know, perhaps there could be a patio and some seating outside that would come up to the curb or, you know, nearer to the sidewalk. I don't know. But I do think that the staff had some recommendations that could work, that would meet the spirit of the overlay. I haven't seen those yet.
And another question for you. So, the request here is for Burger King to be outside of the overlay. And we don't necessarily want to set a precedent so everyone in the corridor is outside the overlay. What is your response to that? I mean...
Well, you're right. I don't want to gut the overlay. I mean, a lot of time and effort and thinking went into that, a lot of community meetings and expense. I mean, those studies that we did that included community meetings were done probably with mostly city funds. And so, you know, I don't want to gut the overlay. I think it sets a good standard and that we should, you know, try to comply with it as much as possible.
Thanks.
So, am I hearing in your comments that you feel like the accommodations could be made in the UDO change that was passed tonight?
I hope so.
Huh?
I hope so.
That it could be built with some different designs?
I hope that the alternative, can't recall the exact language, but the alternative compliance, not alternative facts, alternative compliance. I hope that with that alternative compliance provision that we can find something else.
Paul says it could. Paul says no parking, though, is ever going to allow you, them to meet the...
Right. I think we wanted to limit the wiggle room there because if you start allowing bays of parking there, then there's no sense in having the... bays of parking there, then there's no sense in having the overlay. I mean, the idea of pedestrian-oriented development is not just that you pedestrianize the sidewalk, but you pull the building closer so there can be more interaction of what happens on the sidewalk with what's going on in the building.
Is parking allowed on Fifth Street? There, it's, it's not. Okay, so there's no way to make accommodation for that?
Right. Oh, on-street parking on Fifth Street?
Yeah.
No, no, okay.
Not at all.
Yeah.
What we have here is requests to come out of the overlay. If it does, it essentially does away with overlay district. I mean, pretty much.
I, I would, if it did come out, I would recommend that everybody seriously consider the legitimacy of the overlay district and consider taking it out. Cause I just don't think you have any rational basis for expecting anyone else to conform with those standards. So probably oughta ask yourself the question, do we, do we need the overlay?
Second issue here is that the request is for general use zoning. So what we saw doesn't mean anything. It could be any kind of a site plan. So if we, the other side of the coin is, if we don't do that, you're probably never gonna get your new Burger King. Okay, so that's what you need to consider. So I'll sit back and listen.
So with that being said, it's, to me, it seems like it's an issue between community investment versus the integrity of the overlay.
But could you not come back with some kind of special use, which is how we generally get more information rather than a general?
Yeah.
Out. I mean, there still seems to be some other options.
But if he gets, if, if the petitioner get, request is granted, he will already have general use zoning, right? Is that correct? So that means we can't, there will be no special use aspect to any rezoning.
Right.
What if we allowed the petitioner to continue this in light of the UDO amendment we passed earlier? Since there's a thought that maybe there's something we did that could help let them come back?
If the petitioner is so inclined, I don't know if he would, would you consider continuing? Do you think there's anything, any possible compromise could be reached?
I mean, we've been, all years, all along. I mean, I've been here three times. We absolutely intend, and I, I realize the challenge that's in front of us right now because, because it, you know, or the, or the belief that if this gets carved out, the ramifications may be universally. Our intent is our intent. Our intent is to build, you know, I need to have a layout that functions from a pedestrian and an automobile perspective. Right now, you have, those that are familiar with this, you have very steep site ingress egress. You have a single lane with, with a, not, you know, a ridiculous radius to get around here. There's really no queue. It doesn't function. Our plan cures most of that shortcoming. Our plan and intent, which, you know, this kinda raced up on us in this, in this, how this sort of evolved, because we were taking dollars from elsewhere to facilitate this and meet certain other external obligations that we had, excuse me, that we had in 17. But I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I, the answer is, our goal and our directive from the conclusions of our meetings with the city was to get this where we could commence this project and be, know we have the right to do this by, on or around October 1. That was, that was the challenge. That was, and everyone knew that. It's not, you know, it was no hidden agenda. And that's sort of how I got taken by the hand and brought to the, brought to the table. Our intent is to work as we did in this community. You know, the idea of not having parking along a frontage, it can't happen here. You've got two frontages. And I've got a shallow depth. I'm gonna have a parking field. And frankly, in the community, most consumers would want to be visible to the street, not behind a building, not visible to the street. That's just a generally, whether you're in an urban setting or a suburban setting, that's generally the case. There are examples where the new urbanism has been applied and the building's pushed up the front. They're usually on two-acre sites. They're part of an integrated center with multiple generators that they've become a parasite. And most of the stuff's happening from behind. But in this case, we are the stimulus. And, you know, we're, and we clearly, I mean, this is real. This is what we drew before we showed up and did it. We put, we, we put something into the corner. We pulled the project to the street. We had this pedestrian element going into the building. And that's exactly what, you know, we, we, we delivered on what we said we were gonna do. That's what I can.
What I hear is no. Okay. He needs something in October. We're not the final decision. I think we need to make a recommendation to city council. From the side, they won't keep the overlay or not. Need to keep in mind that these pictures mean nothing because this is general use zoning.
But I don't think we're affecting the whole overlay. I mean, I, I really don't believe that. I think that the one thing that the overlay challenges people is that when you have sites that aren't large enough to facilitate sort of the intent, you have to do the best you can to get there. And, and when, you know, regardless of those elements that were built in, I mean, even like the glass piece. I have a kitchen. So the facility today, my, my, my dining area is back around the corner, which is not good for my business or for my customers because, because you can't keep an eye on what's happening in the dining room. If a table's dirty, you, you know, you don't see it because you're up around the corner. So, you know, the new facility would be right inside. It's, it's very comfortable and attractive. In other scenarios where we, we've, we've made these transformations, we've become a place where the community comes in. And those people that, that maybe weren't the most welcoming of, of guests outside or inside a store, or didn't come because of some other, you know, some external thing happening, it changes the whole culture of what's going on in and around the store. That's our experience.
Okay, anybody?
I move for approval.
What was, what approval of, was drawn from the overlay?
The request. No. Yes. The approval as it is.
To rezonate.
Yeah. I'm, I'm more concerned about investment in East Winston than, than protecting the overlay, quite frankly.
No, I'd always draw my second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Younger, second. Mr. Leake to approve zoning or to remove from the overlay district, right? Any discussion on that?
Yes, yeah. I'm, I'm in agreement with the comment. The reasoning is, we're creating a burden. There's no question about it. But the community, it sounds as though, you know, there's been a lot of buy-in with folks that have thought about this overlay. And so I'm going to vote in that direction, is in favor of trying to keep the overlay, you know, the integrity of the overlay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm one of those people that lives in an overlay and I've experienced the toughness of that and things along the way. And I, I, if, if the community is speaking through Ms. Davis in terms of engagement on this, then I always feel like, okay, if the community's willing to go through that pain, and I think the purpose of the CDC is development, that's the middle lane, then I've gotta go with Ms. Davis saying that she thinks there's a way that this could work out with this new UDO. So I, I would have to vote against that.
I'm coming down on the side of redevelopment in that area myself. Anyway, any other discussion? Of a motion for approval is in favor? opposed? Six, three. All right. Thank you.
All right. Nick Donamoni agenda is zoning docket W. 3345. And the petitioner is Power Screen Mid-Atlantic Incorporated. The site is 5.21 acres located on the northeast corner of Gray Tuck Drive and High Point Road. And the request is a special use rezoning from the use of, from the District of LIS with multiple industrial uses to GIS, general industrial, for the sole use of manufacturing C. Located in the Growth Management Area Three. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there in yellow. It's currently undeveloped. It's located along the eastern side of Gray Tuck Drive, which is a residential street, at least on the western side. To the south is RS 20 zoning. To the east is a case that we mentioned just briefly earlier before, zone GIS along Temple School Road. To the north is also the site that you saw earlier, is owned LIS. It's undeveloped, as I said. And the southeast Forsyth County area plan recommends industrial land use for this. This is part of the Union Cross Industrial Park that was rezoned in 2003 that we mentioned earlier. It goes back all the way over to Temple School Road. And the area plan does recommend industrial use for this property. Just a quick correction in your staff report on page five. The third paragraph down, we had mentioned that for the purpose of allowing a significant amount of outdoor storage for large construction equipment, that was, that staff's concern. And then the second sentence was the Keen Transport Site was rezoned from LIS to GIS. And, and we meant to say, that's a typo. We meant to say the Caterpillar Site. The Caterpillar Site is just at the far end, right end of this, of this image. It goes all the way at the corner of Temple School Road and Union Cross Road. So that was a typo. We apologize for that. That was rezoned at GIS, but that was also had the condition of no outside activity for that manufacturing C use. So this is quite a different animal. They are asking for outdoor activity for the manufacturing C use. These images are taken on site. This is looking north on Gray Tuck. The site is to the right. They have agreed to a negative access easement, so there would be no access on this road. And these are some of the homes there across Gray Tuck from the subject property. One image back on Temple School Road, looking to the north. This site is connected to the, the site that's within the county that's currently under rezoning already and, excuse me, as well. And I'll mention that after this case. This is a site plan and I've designated the two rezoning case numbers. We're now looking at the one outlined in blue, W. 3345. And it does connect internally, several hundred-foot connection of gravel linkage there. And the access would be back on to Temple School Road. And this is the next site on your agenda, F. 1569. That's a site plan amendment. But back to the subject property, there are no, showing no structures on there and they have agreed to a condition that there'd be no buildings on the site. But it's primarily gravel for the intent of storage of equipment and maintenance of equipment associated with a manufacturing C use. The yellow are the single-family homes located along Gray Tuck. So manufacturing C is a very intense use due to noise, odor, glare, vibration. So we really have some concerns about this use going right across the street from single-family homes. When this property was rezoned to LIS and not GIS, but LIS in 2003, the whole Union Cross Industrial Park excluded the use of manufacturing C, primarily because of its appearance and impact on the surrounding property. So that's why they are coming in for the rezoning now to a more intense district to add that use. These are some of the pieces of equipment we found on the Power Screen website, which we could potentially envision these being on the site with the subject request be approved. The proposed use of manufacturing C again is one of the most intense and impactful uses allowed in the UDO. Manufacturing C is not compatible with single-family homes because it allows for outside activities, which may include noise, odor, dust, vibration, or visual impacts. And it's not consistent with the Business Park Design Guidelines, which specifically exclude the use of manufacturing C. And it could set, set a negative precedent for other properties within the Business Park Development. So staff's recommendation is for denial and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What's the difference in manufacturing B and C?
C allows for the outside activity.
And B?
Does not.
Just, just, no storage, outside storage with B or nothing, everything?
I don't believe there's any.
There's no, there's no outdoor storage with B. He is right. The difference between B and C really does with outdoor storage. It does allow for heavy noise, heavy, you know, potentially heavy fumes, heavy dust. A and B, there's a little less difference in between. A is supposed to have none of that. B is supposed to have very little of that. C can have all of that plus outdoor storage.
So you put a pole barn on top of it and closed it on the sides. This would be max, this would be B instead of C?
I need to let Chris make that.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear. But essentially, they can store stuff outside without it being underneath a pole barn. They can just store stuff outside.
But I mean, if it was enclosed, then it would, then they would fit in a B rather than C?
No. Well, probably not because of the, the nature of the business as well. They're gonna be repairing and rock crushers. I haven't heard a rock crusher, but I imagine if it's inside the building, it's still gonna be pretty loud. So it would probably still be classified as a C.
They're gonna crush rock?
Well, they'll have to. I mean, again, I'll let them speak to their business model, but I would assume that they would have to if they're repairing them. I would think they would want to ensure that they work before they send them back out.
Okay. Any other questions, the staff this time?
I'll wait and ask that later.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Causey?
Good evening. Steve Causey, Allied Design, 4720 Kestrel Mill Road, Winston-Salem, 27103. Our office has been working with the petitioner to prepare the rezoning request and site plan. Also here tonight are representatives of the petitioner, Power Screen, Mr. Andrew Comey, Chris Stanley, and Adam Logan. Gary summed it up pretty well. We're here requesting the use to GI zoning. The only use we proposed to include was manufacturing C. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on around August the 30th. We invited about 70 property owners, about 20 or so were in attendance. And you've got a summary of that meeting in your, in your package, I believe. Kinda when the project started, we came in for sketch plan review. We had a real hard, hard time classifying what these guys were, which use they fit into, which category. Somehow we landed on manufacturing C. Part of their operation does include repair of heavy equipment, maintenance and servicing. But in large part, this portion of the project will be used for storage of equipment. They don't propose any processing, any assembly or fabrication on this portion of the property. We did, we did try to consider a few other uses. I tried to lob them all out there and none of them stuck, but contractors heavy, outdoor display retail. The closest thing we got to maybe was a storage yard and that in fact would also require GI zoning.
Let me add on to a little bit of what Steve's saying there. I stopped your time. I'm not hitting you there.
That's all right.
We did have a lot of those conversations and we spent a lot of time, Chris and I did, going through the NAICS and SIC codes. Bottom line is there's just not a use in our ordinance that fits well with what they're doing out there. So while manufacturing C is not perfect, the other options are probably equally far away from perfect as manufacturing C is. So we, we did spend a lot of discussion there. Steve's right. There's just not a great use in our ordinance that lines up well with what they're doing. So I just wanted to clarify that while we were, we're on that.
Thank you. I just wanna make maybe perhaps several clarifications and elaborate on a couple of points outlined in the staff report. Appropriately so, the staff did reference the Business Park Design Guidelines, recommendations for manufacturing B only, no outdoor storage of equipment. I wanted to point out, and I think you've seen it earlier tonight, even manufacturing B does allow a lot of truck, trailer traffic, truck docks, truck and trailer storage as well. The staff did make the analogy and compared the site to the Caterpillar Site, which is, I don't know, probably a quarter of a mile up, up to the north. This is just a quick image of the Caterpillar Site. And again, they do include a significant amount of storage, believe it or not, probably close to three acres there on the northern side of the site. It probably was designed as a truck dock, but I, I do see a fair amount of storage out there. Understand, maybe they did agree to some conditions to eliminate processing, but at least some degree of storage might be occurring on that site. More importantly, I want to point out, as it relates to the Caterpillar Site, this is the, the next zoning document behind, docket behind us. This is the portion of the Power Screen project that is in Forsyth County. It was in fact the Keen Transport Property. It was zoned after the Caterpillar Site specifically to store. It was zoned after the Caterpillar Site specifically to store axles that were produced at Caterpillar that were awaiting shipment by Keane Transport. So although it may not have been happening on site, there was a significant amount of outdoor storage happening.
So, so all of the little dots you see there are axles?
Large axles. You could see the size maybe in relation to some cars, but the yellow dots are axles. The, there's a large crane, if you will, that picked these up and set them on the back of the trailer.
We're talking about axles for like large earth movers, right?
Large earth...
Assembled on-site earth movers, yeah, quite large, yeah.
I do want to maybe elaborate or further emphasize the buffering that we do propose in the request. The report does reference that we're volunteering, or we are providing a 50-foot type four buffer along Gray Tuck Lane. And in fact, we are volunteering a six-foot high berm to be constructed in, in that, in that buffer yard. That's noted on the site plan. Additionally, the plantings we propose are the plantings that would be required for a 15-foot type four buffer yard compared to a 50-foot type four buffer. It's about 20 supplemental evergreen shrubs and about four more primary evergreens per 100 feet. So more plantings in, above and beyond what's normally required in that buffer in addition to the berm. The petitioner has agreed, I think it's noted on the report, to double the primary evergreen plantings that exist along Temple School Road. The site's probably been abandoned since December of last year, going on nine months, and, and some of the earlier speakers were correct, the vegetation's not been maintained well, some in fact has died. But we have agreed to additional plantings along Temple School Road. Additionally, I'll point out as well that six feet, a six-foot-high chain link fence is proposed for security around the site. There is an existing chain link fence around the Keane portion, and that will be continued and wrapped around the portion that's within the city. I'll just make a few other comparisons to zoning docket 1526, which was the original rezoning for the Keane Site. That property was in fact zoned from AG to GIS. It included storage along the right-of-way adjacent to AG property for a distance of 1,100 feet. There were several favorable references to the relevant legacy recommendations in that report, none of which are kind of present in, in this report. In the 1526 case, the Union Cross Southeast Area, Southeast Forsyth County area plan is referenced. Reference for guidelines pertaining to screening of storage yards and processing area, and in fact, the support or the recommendation for approval of 1526 did seem predicated on some of that buffering. The staff report for 1526 acknowledges the majority of the site was being used for parking and outside storage, and yet still it was a favorable recommendation there. It seems a lot of the basis for denial is based on the conclusion of compatibility and consistent uses. I will agree, manufacturing C is a more intense use. The proposed zoning is certainly compatible with the zonings located to the east on the Keane property. Subject site would generate around 50 trips per day. You've seen a site that would generate 500 or better, and, and I think that's going to be similar to any other development that comes to the area. The adjoining zoning is LI. The uses include manufacturing B and warehousing. Once again, you've seen kind of the, the truck traffic and volumes that that can generate. So again, I don't think this zoning is inconsistent with some of the impacts of truck, truck dock and traffic. We are providing a 50-foot type four buffer adjacent to a 50-foot right-of-way. Other developments in the area could be as close as 50 feet. Again, I think that was pointed out earlier. I think the three primary points outlined in the staff report were the concerns that this request will set a precedent for deviating from the LI zoning for allowing significant outdoor storage. There were concerns about the close proximity to single-family homes and the concerns that the buffering is not adequate. In response, we would offer that the precedence for storage was set with 1526, and additionally, this proposal is not inconsistent with the storage that could happen on the LI zoned properties. I want to be clear, there's no outdoor activity proposed on this property. It's merely for storage. Perhaps, you know, we could consider some conditions that limited the use specifically to storage and did not allow some of the outdoor activities. We believe the buffering is consistent and actually above and beyond what's required. However, if we need to consider additional buffering to mitigate the impacts, I think that's certainly on the table. So in summary, that's all I have. The owner is here if you have questions, and of course, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Causey?
Yeah, the chain link fence that you talked about, that wouldn't have razor wire on top or anything like that, would it?
We're pretty ambiguous in that regard, but we could certainly kind of explore that. I mean, if we could maybe get an answer from the owner. It is within the buffer yard, I will say that, so I don't think it'd be visible from the outside.
Okay. And how would the trucks access the site? How would they get in and which side of it would they come in?
They would come in only, and again, I don't guess you've probably, we haven't really discussed that case, but the Forsyth County, the portion of the site that is in Forsyth County only, the existing driveway into the Keane property, they would travel kind of in a southwardly direction and basically navigate through the Forsyth County portion of the property.
So off of Temple School Road?
Off of Temple School Road, thank you.
But what I was wondering is if you could show me on the site plan what, what part of it the trucks might be parked on and sort of thing?
Well, let me be clear, it would actually be equipment, not trucks. So if you could follow this, all traffic, the only access to the site is up here at Temple School Road. It actually happens to be adjacent to the driveway that was on the previous zoning docket that would access this building. This in fact, we just kind of overlaid the 140,000 square foot building from earlier tonight. But they would access the property here and navigate down through the site and over into that area.
And then they would take, offload their, whatever heavy equipment they had?
Yes.
And then leave the site presumably?
Trucks would leave the site presumably. I think we've even agreed to a negative access easement on Gray Tuck, so just to be clear, there would be no access from Gray Tuck. The large, low boys would leave the site. Equipment may sit until it's ready to go in for service. It may go out for sale, it may go out for lease, at which time it may be picked up or in fact may be driven up to the service area. Again, I don't know how much of the plan you're seeing right now, but this in fact is a proposed building of about 25,000 square feet where all the, the repair work would happen.
But that's the next case, you understand?
And I'm just, I want to know about the activities that will be, take place on here, and are there any, is there a time of day that this would happen, or could this happen at night?
I think this was even outlined in the neighborhood meeting summary, generally normal business hours, eight to five, Monday through Friday. Not to say there's not a long evening every now and then, early morning, but I think generally they're eight to five kind of business, and they could answer a little more specifically. But, but really to clarify too, only the storage is proposed for this portion, and I think we're kind of willing to agree to that via some conditions to prohibit any outdoor activity beyond storage.
No, storage is a parking lot. I mean, it's just parking equipment.
Basically, a storage yard for large equipment, yes. That's really the only need we have to occur on this property. There's, we don't, no assembling, no disassembling, no repair, no maintenance, no service, any of that type work would need to occur on this property. No, no processing, I think is the term used for manufacturing C. Again, it's not the best definition of what they do, but...
But those uses would be allowed in manufacturing C? So there's nothing...
I think I'm trying to suggest we would voluntarily agree to eliminate that type of use, I guess, if there's a way to do that.
Absolutely. Wait a minute. Well, I need to understand that.
He's willing to do that, but if his company disappears, like has happened to Keane...
It's tied to the land.
It's tied to the land, so the next person could do it.
No, no, no.
You don't think so?
No.
So his condition would be tied to the land, not to his company?
They can always come in with a rezoning request to, you know, grant it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be right back.
Yeah, don't go anywhere. Mr. Westmoreland, would you like to speak? I know you would, that's a silly question.
There's about four minutes and 15 seconds. Tom, don't take all of them.
You'll take all of them.
My name's Tom Westmoreland. My address, 6851 Oak Steel Trail, Carnesville. My business is located at 6251 Oak Hill Road, Walker Town. Curse or blessing, y'all approved me in 2010. Since then, I bought like $1.2 million worth of machines from Mr. Conie in Power Screen. Noise factor of the machines are not nearly as loud as the trucks. They're very honorable people. They do a good job. They say what they do and do what they say. And my wife couldn't be here tonight. She was on the Legacy Committee when they approved all these plants. Her name's Beth Tucker. She's on the locational ag board. She's working tonight. She cuts hair. She said she had approval of anything Mr. Conie does. Well, she knows him very well too, through my deals with... One of the neighbors in Walnepo where his shop is now, said he was very pleased with everything they did up there. I talked with him, they're more quiet. I'm thrilled they haven't tired, you know, it's property along there. I don't see anything wrong with what they're going to do with the buffer. The machines are really quiet. You can hardly hear them run. Anything they do, or if they need to test a machine, they bring to my place in Walker Town. They don't do any crushing or anything like that on the site. I think you ought to recommend approval, and that's all.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Turn to the opposition.
Again, my name is Myrna Gaetros. I live at 4161 Gray Tuck Drive. I'm the third house on the left of the five houses that are going to be impacted by Power Screen. And I mean impacted. I've done a little bit of research on the equipment. You saw a few pictures of a few pieces. Yes, they say this is going to be a storage facility? They're just going to store equipment there? No. Tractor trailers are going to be coming in to that property to get these pieces of equipment and taking them out and bringing them back in, and taking them out and bringing them back in on a regular basis. So the noise factor is going to be there, extremely loud. You can tell me that a buffer's going to be put in, that's not going to take care of the noise. The way that that property sits, along with Temple School and our property that slopes down, is like a bolt. And we can hear tractor trailers on the service road behind Dell and behind, it's been Herbalife, and behind Caterpillar. We can hear them, and that's on the service road. From what I understand, Power Screen and the, the bigger building, but for sure, Power Screen has no access to come in from the service road. They're all going to have to use Temple School Road to get into the property. Needless to say, it's a noise factor. It's going to be in my front yard. Right now, I enjoy the privacy. There is a row of trees along Gray Tuck Road across from my home. I don't know if they're going to be left. They're big trees, fairly tall trees. I don't know if they're going to be left, if they're going to remove those and add the buffer or, or both. I don't know that. I didn't get clear answers at the meeting on the 30th. I got a few, and a few answers, and a few nods, and a few, I don't know that answer. So I'm, I'm not real pleased with the issue. It's going to be noisy, it's going to be loud. Equipment's going to be sitting there until somebody comes and picks it up, so it's not just a storage facility. Equipment does leak. You're going to have oil dripping into this area that they say they're going to gravel. You've got the Abbott's Creek running below that, that, I don't know what you call it, it's the Abbott's Creek Flow, right below all of this. So there's a lot to consider. We're only five houses, we're only five families, but they are our homes. As I said before, I moved out into country to be in the country, and it, the city's coming to us, and it's coming to us fast and hard, from above us to beside us. 311's going to cut off High Point, I mean, it's just all around us. So I urge you to seriously consider this, because it is not going to be a good thing for our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Cindy Woods, and I live at 4147 Gray Tuck Drive, Winston-Salem, 27107. And I love that that picture is up, because you really get a great view of how we are... My property, my husband and I's property, is the very last house on that road. So you see, we've been on one side, and now this is the other side. I already told you my concerns about the tall building on our, I think it's our east side. So now we're taking this very thin strip of land, I think it's just over 200 feet deep beyond what the Keane Transportation already has. So it's a very thin strip of property, and we were very hopeful that it was such a thin long strip of property that it wouldn't be developed. So they've tried to figure out a way to develop that property, and I want to be a good neighbor, but I got to tell you, if you look at that line that goes, it jogs around Gray Tuck Drive, Gray Tuck Drive ends at our driveway. So when you see that little thin strip beyond that, that's actually our driveway, and you'll notice they've jogged that whole thing forward, I don't know why, and gone straight across. I did talk to them about maybe granting us a concession and going straight across, giving us a greater buffer zone, because again, as I stressed in the other side, a 50-foot buffer zone is not a lot. Right now, the, the existing building is across from us. We can't see it if it is summer, spring, winter, I could see the top of the crane. The crane's come down now, but it is a big distance, because it's over 200 feet. So now what you're talking about doing is taking that nice buffer that we had before, removing all of it, graveling it, we're not sure, again, we've got well water, we're going to have drippage from whatever machinery is housed there, and then just simply the noise factor from moving that heavy equipment in. Evidently, it's got to come in on a flatbed tractor or trailer. So to move that in, and it's 50 feet from my property, is, is not a quiet thing. It's going to be loud. So we really hope that you consider denying the request. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it this evening. I know everybody's tired, so...
Thank you, ma'am.
About six and a half minutes.
Got some time left? Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. Come forward and give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Gary Gaetros. I live at 4161 Gray Tuck Drive, Winston-Salem, 27107. I am a truck driver. That's my profession. I've got an A-class. I can drive just about anything. But what I mainly do is I drive a fuel truck, and I go on to these job sites, and I fill up these pieces of equipment. Not just that, that particular piece, but any piece that you want me to fill up. And they're loud. Point blank, they're loud. They're loud when they move, they're loud when they're, when they sit still, they're loud when they're, when, when they start up. You know, the noise factor is just going to be immense. We, we're looking at 100,000, 140,000 square foot building to the north of me now, with development of another 100 acres beyond that, and now we're looking at, you know, this being developed in my front yard. The noise factor, the dirt factor, the dust factor, the reduction in the, in the value of my house, you know, I work hard. I work hard. I have three jobs to have what I have, and I work hard. And the value of my house is, is, it's going to, it's going to plummet. It's not going to go up. It's going to go down. So everything that I've, I've worked for, for the last 40 years, I'm, I, I, it's being flushed down the toilet, because I made an investment 17 years ago, because it was a cornfield across the street from my house, and we fell in love with it. And now I'm going to, I'm going to look at this piece of equipment? How many, how many pieces of equipment are they going to have there? One, two, 22, 52? Please deny this. Please deny this. Give them some room up above if they wanna, they wanna go up in a hundred acres. You know, you're gonna develop it. You said it earlier. You're gonna develop it. They wanna develop that other hundred acres. Let them go up there. Please leave us alone. Just let us, just let us have our grass. Just let us have what we have across the street from us. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Little under four minutes.
John Woods, thirty-one, forty-one, forty-seven Gray Tuck Drive, Winston, two-seven-one-oh-seven. I'll buy that property if you guys will let me solve this problem right there.
There's a real estate agent sitting back there, maybe sell it to you. Anyone else like to speak? If not, then declare the public hearing closed.
I would just like to make a motion that we deny this. I think it is very inappropriate. And from reading the staff report, I just can't see much about this that would be, you know, worth approving. So I make that motion.
I would, I would second that because I see alternatives in this plan here of buffering those homes and putting the machinery somewhere else on this property that they're acquiring.
Go ahead and explain that, yeah?
Well, I mean, it looks like this other piece of property that's up close to Temple Road would be blocked if they put their building back in the back part. And you've got the other building coming in there that's gonna block the noise and other things as well. So, you know, by switching things around, there are alternatives that...
So you're saying propose moving the building?
Well, they could move the building back. I mean, I mean, the folks have to realize there's gonna be some kind of development here and it's probably gonna involve trucks. I mean, because this is, you know, L.I. and whatnot. So you're gonna have something, but if you're, if you've got the more obnoxious stuff or the high, you know, manufacturing C, you can put it further away from people's houses and do some blocking with that. They're alternatives. And it looked like Keen did that up there already. I mean, they'd already put their wheels on the, next to Temple Road rather than back there.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I would be voting against that motion. You know, because I think we can solve it with, I think this is a parking lot for heavy equipment. And I think if what Steve intimated, I think we can solve it with buffers and restrictions, you know, the types of things that can happen to that equipment while it's getting transported there and moved away and while it sits there too, so.
Yeah. Causey, can you come back up here? I want you to answer the latest question about the existing trees and the buffering.
It's a triple, it's three times slightly more than three hundred percent of what we would normally require on that type four buffer. Is that correct or is that incorrect? I was thinking that was supposed to be a fifteen-foot normally, and they, and we were putting a fifty feet on that type four.
Well, it's a fifty-foot space. But they're putting, they're requiring for a fifteen-foot in the fifty-foot space.
That's, well said. Does that mean the density of plantings will be more than three hundred percent greater than what you'd normally find? Okay, all right, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Talk about the existing trees, the latest question.
It may not have been clear. It would be about four more primary evergreens and twenty supplemental shrubs every hundred feet, I think would be the difference.
How many are required now? Four more?
I think it's fourteen.
For a fifty-foot type four buffer, you're required three deciduous trees and eighteen primary evergreen plants. No, I'm sorry, fourteen primary evergreen plants. For a fifteen-foot, you're required two deciduous trees, eighteen primary evergreens, plus twenty supplemental evergreen shrubs. So you're getting...
One less tree.
One less deciduous tree, four more primary evergreens and twenty shrubs.
And the shrubs.
So you've also got the six-foot berm.
So what about the existing trees? Is there a way to create the berm?
I've driven out there. I'm pretty sure most of the large trees are in the right-of-way. We haven't surveyed it, but they do appear to be in the right-of-way. I'll say that, off the property, in other words.
So you wouldn't be able to remove them if you wanted it?
No. If you look at the aerial or cleaner aerial, you can maybe see, it may have been cleared at some time. There's some growth probably that's come back. You know, it's kinda scrubby. These folks can tell you better about the folks. The larger trees appear to be in the right-of-way.
So there's a fifty-foot right-of-way and then there'll be a fifty-foot buffer beyond that.
Buffer beyond that.
Sixty-foot right-of-way.
Thank you, thank you.
So about a hundred and ten feet from, to the road.
So your berm is included in that buffer distance?
Yes.
So your vegetation is planted on top or...
Yes.
And how much different would it look from the existing buffer that you have on the rest of the road going up further past this site?
I think the Temple School Road buffer was a type one or two. It's on the plan.
I can't remember. Staff kind of made a mistake with that. Well, I think we made a condition of approval in an attempt to get a higher level of planting. And we asked for a buff yard instead of, we would've probably gone with a standard street yard, we would've gotten more plantings. I think by asking for the buff yard, we actually hamstrung ourselves because we didn't get very many plantings. And therefore, the, you know, the plantings that are out there look sparse because they haven't really had a chance to grow. So I believe as part of this, we have a condition of approval that we would go back and, and I don't know what level we're planting out there, but it would...
Basically doubling the primary evergreens.
Sixteen evergreens per one hundred feet on the next case along Temple School Road is what's proposed.
Well, let me just defend my motion a little bit. I really do think that this is incredibly inappropriate to put something this intense manufacturing C up against residential on the other side. I mean, this is almost like living in a Walmart parking lot. I mean, you've got the tractor trailers, you've got the noise, you've got the fumes. It's just not compatible with residential living. It really is not. A berm is not gonna fix it. A buff yard's not gonna fix it.
You know, this, this is an area of the county that I'm very familiar with. And I'm struck by the, sort of the juxtaposition between what's going on on one side of Temple School Road and you look across the other side and there's tobacco as far as you can see. And it's really an illustration of what's going on in this part of the county. And as one of the folks that spoke in opposition said, the city or development is coming at them and coming at them fast. And I unfortunately don't have an answer for that. And it's kinda compounded by the fact that from a zoning standpoint, we're trying to shove a square peg into a round hole. This is probably not traditional manufacturing C use, but staff's saying we don't know what else to call it. And so I think the best that we can hope to do is put some conditions on an approval that allows some use while addressing some of the concerns as well. You know, it's, I disagree with George. I think the more intensive use is gonna be where their, where their building is gonna be located because that's where they're gonna be doing all the things that they say they're not gonna do down here in the, in the storage area. So I don't think you gain anything. In fact, I think you're probably, you know, going out of the frying pan into the fire if you do that.
Well, the current zoning allows warehousing, manufacturing. You could have a building about half the size of this big one right across the street with a lot of tractor trailers coming and going. Yeah, yeah. So the fact that they're willing to say that they'll limit this strictly to parking equipment, there'd be no manufacturing, no processing, nothing like that going, it's just a parking lot. It's a lot less intense by restricting to that one particular use than this long list of uses currently permitted out there.
Not to mention that the buffer is exponentially greater than what we required for the building that's being built closer to these houses.
It's just that the noise in and of itself is just something that you can't, you can't have a condition that's going to do that.
The noise from the machinery or the noise from...
The noise from the trucks.
The trucks bringing the machinery in.
That's something I wasn't clear about. Are the tractor trailers dropping it off up at the building and then the equipment itself is being driven to the parking area or are the tractor trailers coming through it?
One of you gentlemen, Works for Power Screen, come up and explain your operation to us a little bit.
My name's Andrew Coney. I'm the president of Power Screen Mid-Atlantic Against the Petitioner.
Need your address, please, Mr. Coney?
Eighty-four nineteen Harreva Road, two-seven-three-one-zero. Ask me questions about, maybe I can...
The question I had was where the process of using the tractor trailers, which everybody knows are noisy, where they'll be on the site compared to just this parking area? Were they gonna drive to the parking area and unload there or unload up at the other facility?
Then bring a pan or something. Okay, this would be the maintenance facility building. And then this would be our office admin separate. Equipment come in, load it up in a low buoy, for example, with a tractor pulling it. But that's the same tractor that would pull a forty-foot trailer going to that building. That's the same tractor. He's just pulls either piece of equipment, same thing. So it would come in, it would unload in this facility here, turn around. That's what this would do, the turnaround, it would pull back it, the tractor trailer's gone. This equipment is self-propelled. It's on its own onto carriage, I guess, tracks. Then we would walk it from either there back into the shop if we maintain it, or from there back for storage. The only reason for this is because we have to come in and turn around here with those trucks, unload, unload and get back out again. But I still need somewhere to store the equipment after we maintain it before it goes back out again. And just from my experience in my business, this is not happening ten times a day. This is happening two or three times a week at most. This is not, I mean, these are not vacuum cleaners that go out to do at Walmart. These are big machines that in the whole year, we might only do fifty of these in the entire country. This is not, this is not high, high volume stuff. And just a point on the noise. This equipment is regulated now through all the noise emissions controls, noise level decibels. This equipment is quieter than a farm tractor that cause that tobacco. And that's set regulation laws, just to let you know. That tractor is not regulated. That tractor's louder than what this equipment is whenever I work it or work on it. The gentleman earlier said a rock crusher. We don't crush, we don't do any of that. I mean, the best way I could describe this is a car dealership that maintains cars. They come in, you work on them, you sit for a while until the guy comes back, gets scared and set back out again. That's kind of the best way I could describe this. So the noise level is not, I think, what people perceive it to be. I mean, there might only be, honestly, I just know my business. There might be a tractor comes back here to load that up once a week. And actually, he's not even loading back there. He's loading up in this point, to be honest with you, because this is self-propelled. It walks out. And that was the reason why the site by itself was not big enough, Keen property, which in my opinion was a lot worse than what we'd be doing. It'd be creamed stuff. But I need this property to make this property work. If I don't have this property, then I don't work. I'm looking somewhere else.
Mr. Coney, where's your property or where's this equipment stored now?
Walnut Cove, North Carolina.
So in Stokes County?
Stokes County, yeah.
What kind of value of equipment are we talking about?
I hate to give numbers. Actually, what?
But you pay taxes on it wherever it's sitting. Is that right?
I give taxes on fifty million dollars worth of equipment, which obviously won't be there anymore. They're not happy about that, but somebody gonna benefit from it. And that's, that's equipment taxes, rental equipment, which is different than prob... I mean, this whole property, when it's done, might be worth two, three, four million dollars, something. Property tax fine. The value is where that equipment is sitting on that property from January one, it's treated that way too. So, which is quite high, a lot of money, a lot of revenue in that. So the reason I would like here is, same reason Caterpillar and Dell or Herbalife, it's, this was zoned to bring in trucks in and out easily. And I just haven't, it just suits easy off the highway and stuff, so. I wanna work with neighbors. I mean, I'm, I would love to work. Like, somebody suggested, I think the lady that lives here, that we jotted this in. I mean, I never, if it makes it, I mean, I don't need that corner. I mean, I could move this over, draw a straight line here, buffer it over, so that it's not as close to her. I mean, I'm willing to work here. Just let me know what I gotta work with, so. And you had mentioned you drove out, I just noticed this earlier and said that this up here look horrible right now. I don't own that property yet. I can't cut the grass and prune the trees. When I do, I will, but I can't do nothing about that until I close on it, so. And I assure you, if you knew my wife, she's a fanatic with that stuff, it'll look good. But the business, again, they come in, they turn around, I maintain it. Sometimes it goes right back out the door. It never goes down here. But there is time, a customer needs a machine serviced or something, I'm not gonna pick it up until next week or next month. And so I'll just, we have to put it somewhere. I can't put it here because that's where I turn around, load and unload, so I gotta put it somewhere, which is here. And that's all it is. It'll be, somebody said, that gentleman earlier, two machines, five? I don't see that. Maybe ten machines, maybe. I hope not, because then I'm not doing my business if they're sitting there. But, I mean, they'll be sitting lined up, maybe here, 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 whatever it is. It's big equipment. You can't put a lot there in the first place. You just need space, that's all. Like I said, I've got, I've got a business now in Walnut Cove. We've just outgrown it and I'm trucking to Walnut Cove. I just have some issues up there. I first started in Kernersville off sixty-six. We outgrew it originally and that's where kind of my admin office is. And then I've got this shop in Walnut Cove where we... I got to merge the two together, it just makes more sense now. And, I mean, it's just, it's, I just like this location. It's just part of business. We're growing. I just, I'd like to be in this one spot, so if you guys could some way make it happen. And I don't know if you see this or not, but if that is not approved, which means I'm not buying it, then that won't happen, so I'm looking somewhere else, so. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Mr. Coney?
You know, I was just wondering what height the berm, the neighbors would feel, would cut out some of the, I don't know, whatever it is, gonna be dust or whatever, because it seemed to be some willingness to play around with that if you all are going this direction.
What I would do, I mean, I will be a good neighbor. I mean, you gotta understand...
What does that mean, a ten-foot berm?
I mean, we talk, I mean, whatever, we can talk about it.
I don't know what would work. I just, if it doesn't make any difference, then okay, it doesn't make any difference.
No, I, I mean, what are we offering now? Six foot? So, I mean, there's another, there's another community meeting, I guess. When is that? I would love, I'd be, I'd look out there. I'm approachable. I'm in the bigger business. I'm approachable. But, I mean, I'll be there, so.
So motion's on the floor. We have, thank you, Mr. Coney. We have a motion for denial. Are there any comments? All in favor of the motion to deny? opposed? So the motion failed? Is your motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve.
Any conditions?
Well, I don't know enough about, if you can get a chance.
Well, I mean, they have the conditions, but parking only, no process.
I don't want to have limits. I mean, I don't want to start talking about vehicle limits and things like that. Maybe hours of operation or, you know, I don't know if there's anything that makes any difference to anybody. And if it's not gonna change anybody's opinion, then let's don't.
Okay. So you have a motion for approval, Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second, bye. Smith, discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I mean, I think it's important that we have industrial land in our county. It's important for jobs. It's important for our tax base. But I also think that we need to do it in such a way that we respect livability and we respect the residents that are in the area as well. And I think this is out of balance and it doesn't respect the neighbors.
Any other comments?
Now, I would just say I seconded that because if you look, as you mentioned earlier, Arnold, of all the other things that can be there that could be noisy or could be more activity and require less buffer with what we've got and the additional, but, I mean, there's a huge difference... there's a huge difference between, I guess, what kind of really makes me feel comfortable with this, is that the six-foot berm, you're talking about a thick structure of earth with the vegetation on top of it, which is much more than you would get with just a vegetative berm at a site. So I'm comfortable with the buffering and the activity.
Any comments? Have a motion for approval, those in favor? Opposed? So that passes five-four.
All right, we have a zoning case of the evening. Connected to that site is F-1569. This case is within the county. Keane Transport LLC is a petitioner. Site is thirteen-point-six-five acres located on the west side of Temple School Road, north of High Point Road. And the request is a site plan amendment for the use of manufacturing C. in a G.I.S. zoning district. The zoning map showing the subject property, there it's currently zoned G.I.S. This was not a portion of the original Union Cross Industrial Park. That's why it's zoned G.I.S. The use of manufacturing C. is already allowed on this county property and it's really just a site plan amendment. This is looking into the current entrance of the subject property. You'll see a green metal building there, that's about a sixty-five-hundred-square-foot building that was approved with Keane Transport earlier. Again, where Dale stored their, excuse me, Caterpillar stored their axles. That building will be removed and about a total of thirty-two-thousand square feet of building area would be installed on the site plan. Here's the site plan circled in blue with the lavender color, proposed building there. The entrance on the Temple School Road would not be, would not be changed, it would stay in place. And the petitioners have agreed to some additional evergreen plantings, the equivalent of sixteen evergreen plants per one hundred feet would be installed along Temple School Road to augment that street yard that was planted earlier on top of the berm. And so the request is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the Southeast Forsyth County Area Plan, which recommend industrial use for this property, the use of manufacturing Cs and approved use for the site. And the site is located along the minor thoroughfare and we do not anticipate a tremendous amount of traffic associated with this request, similar to what you heard earlier. So staff's recommendation is for approval and the revised site plan does meet UDO requirements. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Is anyone, no one signed up? Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Send on to declare the public hearing closed. Move approval. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, but Mr. Younger in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board?
Make you stay this long for a withdrawal?
Yeah. Save the best for last. Yeah, the petitioner's here too. Why don't we do this? This case is a partial withdrawal of a approved subdivision. There's a requirement that it, once you all approve a subdivision, it has to be built to according to that plan or you have to approve its withdrawal in part or in its entirety. This is a subdivision. Zoom in a little bit. So this is part of Bentree, Bentree Section Five. And Section Five was approved, and if I zoom in a little bit further, you'll see down here what was originally approved as shown as Lot Fifty-Five and later kind of turned into Lot Fifty-four because some other lots were combined. It was shown on the original plan, but it was shown as future lot. It wasn't really controlled by the developer, but he showed it on his plan. The plan came to you and you approved it with conditions. So now it's kind of caught up in that approval and it has to be withdrawn. One of the conditions was that there'd be a negative access easement on Robin Hood Road and a negative access easement along the road going into the development, two-hundred-and-twenty feet into the development. And that would have left that one single lot plenty of room for a driveway at the north end. A month after it was approved, it was platted because back then you could platter before you built the roads or put the water and sewer in. So they platted all the other lots except that one and they left it out of the plat and they called it future again. And then it, now it shows as Lot Fifty-four. So that all happened, they never really had control of that lot. It was kind of in, kind of out, but it's in the boundaries of the subdivision, so it has to be officially taken out. About two years later, we went through the UDO conversion. We changed all the zoning districts from this whole area, the residential area, suburban area was zoned R-six. That allowed ten thousand square foot lots if you had water and sewer. And the, all the folks in Bentree came in and petitioned to have all their lots zoned RS-forty. And they were successful. And everything inside Bentree was zoned RS-forty. This lot was not included in that. And it would, it got classified like everything east of it and south of it and further down Robin Hood, it's RS-nine. So this lot's sitting there, it's RS-nine. You got some information in your packet from the owner showing his interaction with the neighborhood that they don't consider this lot part of Bentree. And we did talk to Transportation Department about the negative access easements that are our original condition. And we agreed with them that we would recommend that you withdraw this lot from the subdivision with a condition that any future subdivisions that occur on this property under the RS-nine designation it has, have a negative access easement along Robin Hood Road and a negative access easement going up the side fifty feet. And Transportation felt that was an appropriate amount of controlled access near the corner that allows them to make better use of their property. So with that condition, we would recommend you withdraw this lot from the subdivision.
Any questions?
Yeah, sure.
I continued to wonder why this ever happened, but is it the same owner from the time or did the ownership change and desires change or...
The developer of Bentree never controlled the lot. The people who sold this section of Bentree to the developer retained this till about two thousand and seven and then they sold it to the person who owns it now. And he's had it for the last ten years.
And just a question. When something is set aside for future development, a future lot, what is the intent there? Is it, the intent is that that lot should be developed in the same way as the rest of subdivision?
Well, actually, that's, I've never seen that used before.
Okay.
I think they, they put it on there because they didn't...
Has nothing behind it then?
Right, there, yeah.
All right, that was my question. Thanks.
So we need a motion. Move approval. Motion, Mr. Grubb, second, Mr. Bryan in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed, that's unanimous. Good job, I stayed around here three or four hours.
Three and a half.
All right, staff report?
Okay, yeah, six new cases that were filed for October. So one is an elective body special use permit, so your role in that will just be for the site plan. And we have a new UDO amendment allowing multifamily in two non-residential zones, so that, that UDO will be coming to you. I think you've got, did you not get a copy of our newsletter for, okay, you've got that, so won't make any mention of that. And I think you have this flyer at your places about a upcoming event, so hopefully some of you can, can show up for that. And with that, that is staff report.
Thank you. Good job. Anything for the good of the order?
I do have one thing. I just wanted to clarify something that Mr. Bryan said earlier on the Gem Site case. And he referenced the original condition of approval dealing with the stormwater management pond. And it says relocation or installation of any stormwater treatment device into any buffer areas vegetation designated to remain or close proximity to adjacent residences on land shall require a staff change at a minimum and may require site plan amendment. That's anticipated, that's looked at if it's shown on the plan and they're moving it to somewhere else. It doesn't anticipate if the stormwater management plan dictates that it go away. So that's why it was done at a staff level and actually it wasn't even done at a staff level as far as a formal change. If stormwater says it's not needed, it just isn't needed. So I just wanted to make sure that folks were aware that it wasn't, we weren't being deceptive or intentional in doing that. It's just, and we've had, and the reason why that, we added that language of that condition is there have been times where there were stormwater devices approved at one portion of the site and it got relocated closer to residential areas and it still was a pond. And there were folks that were upset with that, so just wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
All right, it's time to adjourn. To have a motion to adjourn. Have a second, Al.